All right, everyone, welcome back. I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Great, I'm yes, we are back and we're going to move right into calendar number sixty-five dash twenty-two dash S and sixty-six dash twenty-two dash Z. As everyone gets settled, I want to remind anyone on the call that if you're here to object to sixty-five dash twenty-two dash S or sixty-six dash twenty-two dash Z, please raise your hands and we'll get you promoted. And I am going to, just give me a second, I'm going to track down the department's recommendation for the special use. All right, for calendar number sixty-five dash twenty-two dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a tavern in an existing building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Neighborhood Tap Rooms LLC, Series Uptown Tap Room, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by Andrew Ivari Architects.
Thank you, good afternoon Chairman, this is Richard Thelf, hopefully you can hear me and hopefully we have Andrew Pillman and Terry O'Brien on too. I see Terry.
Yep, and I see Andrew as well.
Wonderful, okay. So, good afternoon again, members of the board, thank you for your time today. My name is Richard Thelf, I'm an attorney at Georgia's in Sino Wiki with offices at twenty South Clark Street in Chicago. I'm appearing, of course, for the applicant Neighborhood Tap Rooms LLC. The applications for the property at twenty, sorry, twelve fifty-five through sixty-seven West Wilson Avenue were a special use and variation for, as you said, a proposed tavern and public place of amusement use. The property is a long existing mixed-use building at the southwest corner of Wilson Avenue and Malden Street. The lot is approximately thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty square feet. The site and adjacent properties on three sides are in a B-three dash three community shopping district. Our business will be located in existing ground floor level space in that building. The space will be approximately two thousand five hundred square feet. The space is currently vacant unfortunately, but fortunately for us, historically it was dedicated to commercial uses and most recently it was used as a long-running Godfather's Pizza Restaurant. As you know, the proposed use is a tavern which does require a special use in a B-three district. The goal is also to host some comedy shows and some live music events which will in turn require the variation. The applicant's principles are Chicago residents and they're experienced owners and operators of the Lakeview Tap Room at fourteen twenty-six West Irving Park Road and also the Lincoln Square Tap Room at forty-seven twenty-one North Lincoln Avenue. Just to mention it before we start, the applicant presented its proposed business to the Graceland Wilson Neighbors Association and received that group's letter of support which was included with our proposed findings. The applicant also presented its proposed business plan to the Sunnyside Mall Committee which is affiliated with Sheridan Park Neighbors Association and received the committee's letter of support that was also submitted in our proposed findings. Although we know it's not required, as a courtesy, the applicant, of course, presented its plans to Alderman Kepelman who provided graciously his letter of support as well. We did tender that to ZBA representatives earlier this week for at least inclusion into your file. I'll add that we're not aware of any objectors. We have not received any calls or any other inquiries about the applications. I'm pleased to have mentioned that we did see some positive comments about the proposed business posted online. For example, in the Uptown Update website on December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the editorial team indicated their enthusiastic anticipation of the start of the business. Present with me this morning is an applicant owner and operator Andrew Pillman and our expert witness, appraiser Terry O'Brien, who's prepared a report on both the special use and variation criteria. That report was included, of course, with our proposed findings. If permitted, I'd like to start with Andy Pillman. Andy, can you please state your name and spell your last name?
Yes, my name is Andrew Pillman, last name is spelled P like Peter, I L L M A N.
What's your business address?
Our main business address is fourteen twenty-six West Irving Park Road, Illinois six oh six one three.
Thank you, you're an owner of the proposed business that we're talking about today, is that right?
That's correct.
You're familiar with the subject prop?
I'm just going to get him sworn in before we do anything else, no worries. Andrew, can you swear affirm, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you're familiar, of course, with the subject property, the surrounding area and your proposed operations and uses, is that correct?
That's correct, I actually live a block away at forty-four forty-four North Malden, so I've been here for five years, live in the neighborhood, know a lot of my neighbors.
Excellent, and I just provided a description of the property and a general description of what we're doing, was that all accurate?
Yes.
Just to start the proposed business, excuse me, will be located entirely, the main operations within the building that has been present at the site for many decades with no additions or material exterior alterations, is that correct?
That's correct.
But there'll be some internal, or there'll be internal various renovations for the proposed use, is that all right?
Yes.
Could you just, give us just a very brief background of your experience in tavern operation?
Sure, so this is my third one. I opened my first one in two thousand and twenty, one of our commercial spaces on Irving Park, which is our business address. And then we recently opened our second one in Lincoln Square, actually in the square, it just opened this fall in September.
Okay, and then just briefly, what are you planning for this site?
So the site is going to be, it's going to be what we would consider a tap room, so our concept is we bring local breweries, eighty percent of them within a mile radius of our tap room because we're neighborhood focused. So we'll have local brews of all kinds inside, we also work with a couple of local distilleries. And also, we'd like to open our space up for meeting, meetings and events for our neighbors.
You were kind enough to work on and submit an affidavit in support of the application. That affidavit remains true and accurate, is that correct?
Yes.
You reviewed the proposed findings of fact that we submitted in this case in the expert witness report, found them to be true and accurate, is that correct?
Yes.
Have called upon to testify further, would you testify in accordance with the findings of fact and expert witness report and all those documents?
Yes.
And then, just as with all of your endeavors, the proposed business will obtain all required licenses, meet regulatory requirements and, subject to the granting of approvals, the business will comply with all zoning ordinance regulations and other applicable city standards, is that correct?
Yes.
Unless there's questions at the moment, I was going to proceed, proceed to Terry O'Brien, who's our licensed real estate appraiser and expert witness. We've previously submitted Mr. O'Brien's qualifications as an appraiser. He's given testimony to this board many times before and I'm not sure if he's sworn in yet, but otherwise I'd like to proceed with him.
Yep, he is not yet, so Terrence, can you state your name and address, please?
Terrence O'Brien, seventy-three eighty-three North Lincoln Avenue, Lincolnwood, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and we recognize your expertise as we have in many past appearances.
Thank you.
So I guess we've got your name out of the way, Terry, you've submitted your resume and qualifications. You're familiar with the property and the surrounding neighborhood and the application in this case, is that correct?
That is correct.
You've prepared a written report on the property and the proposed uses and accurately reflects your professional opinions, is that right?
Yes, I addressed the various criterias for a special use, also addressed the criteria for variations and concluded that the proposed special use and variations requested fulfill all the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance.
And have called upon to testify further, you would testify in accordance with that report, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's our case in chief. We defer if there's any questions.
Yeah, any, any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Sanchez, I've got a question, what type of entertainment are you planning on having at the venue?
So, yep, we're planning on, as you can see over here to the left, having a small comedy club and when we say live music, it's more like live open mic music and also practice sessions for local artists to come in and practice their music.
Are you anticipating like full bands playing there?
No, I don't think the space is big enough, really, as you can see in the drawing, there's, it's only really allows for about twenty people, so it's more of a, a community-based, smaller, smaller situation.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, we're, we're also including a kitchen space and some, some food service in there as well, is that correct, Andy?
That's correct.
And so you anticipate at times charging your cover?
Yes.
That's why you, you want the PPA license, obviously, but you did talk to your neighbors. So it sounds like you did go deep on this, because if the neighbors are signing off on this, they know you're going for a PP, PPA license and that you will be charging at the doors, that, am I fair to assume that?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure my colleagues understand that because if, if neighbors didn't like this, they would be opposing this, but seems like you did your homework and I know that Uptown's a very active community, so we would see if you didn't do your homework, we would have people here telling us, no, 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 we don't want a PPA, PPA bias, a public place of amusement bias, so I think you did your homework from my twelve years here, I, I, I know neighborhoods, so, thank you.
Andy would speak better to this, but I guess, I think there's also, we've got a sense that, a sense of loss from the community when that, the pizzeria closed, I think there is a, a sense in the community that they're missing something and want, want something like this to replace it.
Sure, sure, I, I, like I said, there's no opposition here, seemed like you did your homework. Obviously, you're getting a PPA license, so you will be charging at the door, but it seems like the neighbors know this, so I'm just giving you a pat on the back, good job. You, you, you looked under every stone, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, it sounds like we got what we need here, so we'll take this under consideration, thanks very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Let's go to calendar numbers sixty-eight dash twenty-two dash Z and sixty-nine dash twenty-two dash Z. I believe this will be Rolando Acosta.
It is, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon.
Perfect, good afternoon. So if anyone is here to object for sixty-eight dash twenty-two S D or sixty-nine dash twenty-two dash D, please just raise your hand or press star nine and we'll make sure that you get promoted. With that, Counselor, you can go ahead once your applicants are all set.
I believe Teo Scorte and Andrew Wang should be on.
Yes, Andrew's here.
I'm here also.
Terrific. Good afternoon again, Chairman, members of the board, Rolando Acosta here on behalf of the applicant. The subject property is at the northwest corner of Spalding and Pershing Road and it is currently improved with a, historically has been improved, with a two-story building with a tall attic and a full basement. When Mr. Scorte, who is the manager for the applicant, when his entity purchased this property, it was in a horrible state of repair, as you can see from the photograph on the screen. It was fully vacant, it contained at least seven units, although there's some belief that there may have been units in the attic also based on just the configuration of the stairways and the fact that it's from dormers up at the upper levels. He, and it was the site of many zoning violations, building code violations, as well as some gang activity who occupied the otherwise vacant building as a bit of a clubhouse. He purchased the property, vacated the premises, secured it, secured building permits to rehabilitate it and, and reestablish what were five legal units, there were seven total at that time, but only five were legal, so he demolished the two that were illegal and reestablished the five units, unfortunately during that construction, he also discovered this property was in much worse shape than he had envisioned, the cost escalated and he sought and seeks today to be able to reestablish the two units, the one in the basement, the one in the front that were not legal previously, but there, and also expand and create three units in the attic space which can accommodate it. Because the property occupies the entire site area, parking cannot be provided and that is the subject of one of our variation requests, to reduce to five required parking spaces. Also, because it occupies the entire site area, rear yard open space cannot be provided, which is also the subject of the other variation request and the hardship here being essentially the location of this building occupying almost the entire property. In order to pursue this, the property needed to be rezoned to an R M six. That went through the Alderman's process and we secured a rezoning of the property early last year to the R M six, which authorized the expansion to include the proposed units and, but, and also authorized the variations that are before you. Generally speaking, after his construction, if he can't expand it, he's running negative right now. He'd have a negative rate of return at approximately five percent. If he were allowed to add the additional five units on this property, he would have a return of approximately eight percent. I will note that of the five units that are being provided, there's a commitment of two of them being affordable, so in addition to providing more dwellings in this area, it also will provide some affordable dwellings in this area. The adjacent streets are not heavily parked, it's industrial to the south and the entire frontage along Pershing is frequently available for parking, so we don't believe that the parking, the lack of parking on the property will cause any issues in the neighborhood. With that, I would like to swear in our witnesses and have them validate their testimony before turning to any questions of the board. Teo?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the board.
Teo Scorte, fifty-nine zero one on North Cicero, Suite three oh three, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you, you are the manager of the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
And you are very familiar with this project and this neighborhood.
And in Rolando, I'm just going to swear.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I skipped you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Don't worry, don't worry. Teo, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So, and, and your prior testimony is also, you consider it governed by your current affirmation that you will be telling the truth, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And do, is my summary of this matter consistent with your understanding of this case?
Yes, it is.
And in connection with this case, a affidavit was prepared that you reviewed and signed that summarized your testimony on this matter? And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Mr. Wang, and in this case, wait to be sworn in, but state your name and address.
Andy, Andy Wong. My address is fifty-six thirty-nine North Talman, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five nine.
Thanks, Mr. Wong, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
You're an Illinois licensed architect?
Yes, I am.
And you're the architect for this project?
Yes, I am.
Familiar with the project as well as the neighborhood?
Yes.
And we prepared an affidavit that you reviewed and signed and it was submitted to the board that summarized your testimony in this matter. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
With that, Mr. Chairman, it concludes our presentation, happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Yeah, any questions from the board? Hey, it's Rolando, for me, if you could just reiterate, flesh out hardship a little bit more, that would be helpful.
Sure, so we have a building that basically is lot line to lot line except on the west where it has a three-foot setback, but it goes to the rear, to the alley and all the way to the front property line as well as to the Pershing property line. So there's really literally no space in this building to provide parking or open space. It also has a tall but vacant and unused attic and a tall but vacant unused basement. So the, the hardship here is that we have both a building that doesn't allow for parking and open space, but also has unused space that could otherwise be occupied by residential dwelling units that are permitted under the current rezoning, type one rezoning of this project. So the hardships caused by the size of this building relative to its lot.
Okay, great, thank you, any additional questions from the board? All right, Mr. Scorte, Mr. Wong, thank you, we will take this under consideration.
Thank you, have a great day and a good weekend.
Thank you all. You too.
Okay, let's move to calendar number seventy dash twenty-one dash Z. So Counselor Mark Kupiec, let us know when you are ready, we'll get people promoted, I see some hands. And if you are by chance here to object on this matter seventy dash twenty-two dash Z, just raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. I also want to amend, just on the record, a typo in the agenda where this matter reads seventy dash twenty-one dash Z, this should be seventy dash twenty-two dash Z. Yes, we can, Counselor.
Actually, Attorney Kupiec has to accept the promotion as panelist, I've been trying to promote him.
Okay. Yeah, Mark, are you able to, a box should pop up asking you to accept the promotion to panelist? Are you seeing that? All right, good, it looks like you're getting in.
Same thing for John Hannah, if you can please accept the box.
Great. Yep, okay, Mark, you can go ahead. You're just on mute.
Thought I did, but did not, sorry. Try again. My name's Mark Kupiec, I'm an attorney with offices at seventy-seven West Washington, I represent the applicant and I have with me here today three witnesses, I've got, or at least two witnesses. I've got Jonathan Ortega and I've got John Hannah. I'm not sure if I have Jonathan's wife Liliana on, but those are the, the potential witnesses that I have for this case.
I am here.
Yep, Lily, Lily's on as well, Mark.
Okay, good. And the subject matter and relief we're asking for is the applicant seeks a variation to allow the required rear yard open space to be located on the roof of an attached garage accessory building in order to construct a proposed single-family residence with an attached garage with a rooftop deck. And just a brief overview of the subject property is, is vacant, only twenty-four feet wide and only one hundred feet deep, so it's a short lot compared to the standard lot of one twenty-five. Jonathan and Liliana would like this variation granted so they could build a single-family home with an attached garage and because of the short lot, they would like permission to locate the rear yard open space on the garage rooftop deck. And if the variation is granted, they will provide the required rear yard open space. Jonathan will testify, there's other garages on the block in the neighborhood that have rooftop decks. In my research, I've actually submitted resolutions in four other zoning board cases that granted similar relief nearby in support of our contention that this variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. We also submitted copies of three letters that Jonathan had gotten from nearby neighbors. So, with no questions, my first witness would be Jonathan Ortega. Jonathan, you there?
I am, can you hear me?
State your name and your address.
My name is Jonathan Ortega. Address twelve sixteen North Damon, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two two.
Thanks, and John, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And Jonathan, are you a member manager of the applicant LLC?
I am.
And is there another member of that LLC?
There is, my wife, Liliana.
Good, thank you. And Jonathan, is it corrected, you and your wife own the subject property?
We do, correct.
And the property is currently a vacant lot which has dimensions of twenty-four feet wide and one hundred feet deep?
Correct.
Also true that if this variation is granted, that you and your wife plan to build a single-family home with an attached garage on this lot?
Correct.
And also true, Jonathan, if you're able to do that, you and your wife plan to live in the home?
We do, correct.
Good. And Jonathan, because it's a short lot, only one hundred feet deep, you're asking permission to locate the required rear yard open space on the garage rooftop deck, is that correct?
Correct.
Jonathan, also true that you have talked to your neighbors about this project?
We have the direct neighbor to the west provided a letter and our two neighbors behind us in the alley have provided letters as well of support.
Good, so for a total of three letters, correct?
Correct.
And Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, we had submitted those three letters previously. Jonathan, you're also familiar now with the block and the surrounding neighborhood?
We are, correct.
Also true, there's some other buildings on the block that have garage rooftop decks?
Correct.
Also other buildings in the immediate neighborhood?
Correct.
And based on that, Jonathan, in your opinion, is it true that this variation, if granted, will not change the essential character of the neighborhood?
It will not, no.
And Jonathan, also true that we prepared and you signed an affidavit in connection with this case today that we filed on your behalf?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you, true that your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have of Jonathan.
Okay, keep going, we'll circle back with questions, Mark.
Good. Good. Uh, Liliana, would you please state your name and address?
Sir, uh, excuse me if it's a little loud, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so my name is Liliana Ortega, current address twelve sixteen North Damon, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two-two.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Liliana, you heard the questions that I, uh, that I just posed to your husband Jonathan?
Correct.
And if I asked you those same questions, would your answers be consistent with his answers?
Correct.
But Mr. Chairman, I don't think I need to go through it again, I would just rely on that.
Do you want to get John one on?
And I will move on to John Hannah. John Hannah, you there?
I'm here.
State your name and your address.
Uh, John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, Licensed Architect, State of Illinois.
And John, I don't think we've had you yet today, so do you swear to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
John, you are the project architect?
That is correct.
John, is it true the subject property currently is a vacant lot?
True.
Dimensions are twenty-four feet wide and one hundred feet deep?
Correct.
Also true that a standard lap in the zoning district is one hundred twenty-five feet deep?
Correct.
So the subject property is only eighty percent the depth of a standard lap?
That's correct, yes.
And the plans you drew for, were for a single-family home with an attached garage?
Yes.
And also shows the required rear yard open space located on a rooftop deck on top of that garage?
Correct.
John, fair to say that the fact that this is a short lot, only one hundred feet deep, is a unique feature that causes you a particular problem in locating the rear yard open space?
Uh, it certainly does, yes.
And our proposal for the, for the variation is to allow you to locate the re-required rear yard open space on the garage rooftop deck?
Correct.
Rather than, uh, at grade, and the reason that you don't locate it at grade is because the shortness of the lot makes it difficult to meet the requirements.
That's true.
But if the variation is granted, you will meet the requirement, both the square footage of the rear yard open space and the required dimensions.
Yes.
And John, you're familiar with that block and the surrounding neighborhood?
I am.
And there are other buildings on the block in, in the neighborhood that have garage rooftop decks?
Uh, there certainly are.
It's also true, in your opinion, that this variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
Uh, it will not.
And John, you had, you had signed, and we had filed an affidavit in connection with this case here today?
Uh, yes.
And if I continue to question you, is it true that your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Uh, they would.
Good. Uh, that's all I have of John, Mr. Chairman, and I didn't mention, but I would mention that sent out our notices, and we're not aware of, um, not aware of any objectives to the case, and Jonathan obviously talked to, uh, talked to the neighbors, trying to spread the word.
Good, thank you, everyone. Um, and on that, do we have any questions from the board? Okay, we've got plenty of information on this one, so we'll take it under consideration, um, and I thank everyone for their time today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to calendar number seventy-one dash twenty-two dash S. Um, and as everyone gets situated, I'm gonna, um, just remind everyone, if anyone is here to um, object to this matter seventy-one dash twenty-two dash S, please just raise your hand or dial star nine, and we will get you promoted. Um, let's make sure that we have Counselor and applicant, and then I'll read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. Should we have Graham Grady or Sylvia Mikes?
Good afternoon, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, I can. Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you Sylvia. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the recommendation, then we'll get started.
Okay.
Great. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a two-hundred-and-sixty-two-seat religious assembly facility on the second floor of an existing nine-story building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Holy Trinity Church. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, prepared by Paul Gangola Architecture LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Sylvia Mikes. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Taft, Stintinious, and Hollister, located at one-one-one East Whacker Drive in Chicago. Along with my co-counsel, Graham Grady, we represent Holy Trinity Church, which is seeking to establish religious assembly use within the second floor of the existing nine-story building located at two-eighteen South Wabash Avenue. As the subject property is located within a DX sixteen district, a special use is required to establish applicant's proposed use within its leased premises, which consist of eleven thousand four hundred and forty-three square feet. The applicant has a long twenty-four-year history in Chicago with locations in the downtown Pilsen and Roscoe Village neighborhoods. The applicant will conduct two Sunday services at nine AM and eleven AM to a congregation of up to two-hundred-and-sixty-two members. Applicant's administrative offices will be moved from its current location at two-two-eight South Wabash to the subject property and operate Monday through Friday from eight AM till five PM. Here with us today are John Dennis, applicant's senior pastor, Sullivan Curtin, applicant's executive pastor, and applicant's MAI appraiser Kathleen Dart of KMD Valuation Group. Uh, Pastor Dennis, please state your name, address, and business or profession for the record. Is John on? Uh-oh.
Yeah, he is. John, you're just, you're just muted.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, uh, Board for hearing us today. My name is John Dennis, and, uh, I live at fifty-one thirty-five South Harper in Hyde Park, and I'm the senior pastor of Holy Trinity Church in the city.
Great, and, um, Reverend Dennis, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
And Pastor Curtin, please state your name, address, and business or profession for the record.
Hi there, good afternoon. I am Pastor Sullivan Curtin, and I live at eleven thirty-eight North Walcott Avenue, apartment three F in Chicago, Illinois, six zero six two-two, and I serve as the executive pastor at Holy Trinity Church.
Thank you, Pastor Curtin, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, going back to Pastor Dennis, um, as you are aware, Taft submitted findings of fact and your affidavit to the board, which are submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and affidavits?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Pastor Dennis. And Pastor Curtin, as you are aware, Taft submitted findings of fact and an affidavit to the board, which were submitted into evidence. If you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and affidavit?
Uh, yes, I will.
Thank you, Pastor Dennis. Ms. Dart, please state your name, address, and business or profession for the record.
Um, Kathleen Dart, KMD Valuation. I'm an MAI. My business address is forty-seven West Polk Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh five.
Thank you, and, um, for the record, um, Kathy Dart is sworn in, and her expertise has been recognized.
Thank you.
Ms. Dart, you were retained by the applicant to conduct an impact study regarding applicant's proposed religious assembly use at the subject property, correct?
Yes.
And Ms. Dart, have you prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings, and conclusions? And is that report in the material submitted to the board and admitted into evidence?
Yes, it is.
Great. And Ms. Dart, is it your opinion that the proposed special use will comply with all applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, in my opinion, yes, it will.
Is it your opinion that the proposed special use is in the interest of public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community?
Yes, that is my opinion.
Is it your opinion that the proposed special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale, and project design?
Uh, yes, it's an existing building, yes.
Is it your opinion that the proposed special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics?
Yes, it is.
And is it your opinion that the proposed special use is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
And if you were asked to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with findings and conclusions contained in your report?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Ms. Dart. The applicant has, the applicant has spoken with its neighbors and also, uh, with Alderman Riley, and also contacted the Chicago Loop Alliance as part of its community outreach. We are unaware of any objections, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so one thing we always ask when there's, um, some sort of religious assembly moving into a dense and mixed business area is if you would impede on any applications for liquor licenses.
Uh, I am actually going to ask Pastor Dennis, uh, to, to answer, uh, your question, Chairman.
Okay. Oh, and he's on mute.
This is my first time on Zoom, Mr. Chairman, so you'll have to forgive me.
Mine too.
Yeah. Uh, we would be in favor of all liquor licenses. We would not seek to impede. Uh, we've been in the neighborhood for quite some time and are fans of some of the local areas, so.
Great. Thank you. Um, any questions from the board? All right, we thank you all for your time. We've totally got what we need here, and we'll take it under consideration.
Great. Thank you, have a nice weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. All right, we're moving now to calendar number seventy-two dash twenty-two dash Z. If anyone is here to object to seventy-two dash twenty-two dash Z, please just raise your hand or press star nine, and we'll get you promoted. Um, and with that, Dean Marigos, when you're on, feel free to kick it off.
On mute. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me, Dean Marigos?
Yep, we can.
Great. I'm here, uh, I'm here on the matter concerning the, uh, variation for twenty-six thirty-six West Evergreen Avenue. The application is for a variation to reduce the west side setback from the required two feet to one foot east to be three feet, combined side yard setback from five feet to four feet for the proposed three-story, three-dwelling unit building with rooftop stair enclosure and deck and rear stairs with open decks. I have with me, uh, the applicant, Iliana Mansour, uh, our appraiser, Bud Kerwin, and the architect, Dan Ford. Um, I would ask that you would swear them in, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yep, absolutely. So, Iliana Mansour, will you state your name and address, please?
I'm Iliana Mansour, fifteen thirty South State Street, Unit seventeen Q, Chicago, six oh six oh five.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, Sylvester Bud Kerwin, um, will you state your name and address?
Yes, uh, good afternoon. Sylvester Bud Kerwin, Jr. I'm, uh, president and owner of S.J. Kerwin Associates, Real Estate Appraisers and Consultants. My offices are located at seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
Thank you. Um, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, and we, uh, recognize your expertise, as we have many times before. So finally, Mr. Chair. Absolutely. So finally, uh, Dan Ford. Dan, will you state your name and address? Let's see. Dan, you might, you're currently muted.
Yes, my name is Dan Ford. I'm the licensed architect on the project license in the state of Illinois. My address is twenty-nine thirty-three North Holstead Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five seven.
Thank you, and Dan, do you swear affirm to tell the truth on today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I'm going to start with Mr. Kerwin. Could you please again state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Celester J. Kerwin, Jr., uh, I go by Bud, seventy-seven sixty-five West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
And you are a member of the Appraisal Institute with the MA designation?
Yes, that's correct.
And you have testified, as the chairman has said, uh, before the zoning board of appeals, and they have certified you as an expert, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, also.
Is it correct that you were requested by me to review the variation application to reduce the required west side setback from two feet to one foot with the east side yard back at three feet for a total side yard setback combination from five feet to four feet in order to allow the construction of the new three-story, three-dwelling unit residential building? And determine in your opinion as to whether the proposed use would meet the variation standards and comply with the criteria of the zoning ordinance? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Did you personally, uh, inspect the property and surrounding neighbor area?
Uh, yes, on several occasion, and most recently was February tenth, just, uh, several days ago.
And after making your inspection and completing your research analysis, did you determine that the proposed side yard setback for the proposed three-unit building would be an appropriate use and compatible with the other surrounding land uses?
Uh, yes, I did. Uh, in, in my research indicated that subject land was previously improved with a two-unit apartment building for almost a hundred and forty years, and that the building was located, uh, almost right on its west lot line. Uh, the majority of the residential development along Evergreen consists of multifamily, uh, uh, dwellings ranging from two to six, uh, maybe even eight-unit buildings, and many of them are built lot line to lot line. Some have, uh, a passageway under one of it, under the second floor to go to the rear area, and then many others are located all on the one lot line there. Um, so the, the condition that we're requesting here has been established in the community for many, many years, and I, I did not, uh, uh, come across any adverse impact to the character of the area or uh, mainly, uh, prices of other property values because of this setback.
And your, and your report includes, uh, greater descriptions and photographs of these facts?
Uh, yes, I went into extensive data. I noticed the properties on either side of me, as well as the number of them up and down the street. I've included photographs, whether located on the line or lot line to lot line, and that's essentially what the applicant's trying to do here, is replace a building that was, uh, not on the lot, uh, that was on the lot line, but they want to, uh, move it in a foot instead of the two foot to one foot.
Mr. Kerwin, you've mentioned that you prepared a zoning consultation report, setting forth all of your findings and conclusions, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify on the subject property, would your testimony be the same as you provided in your report?
Yes, it would be.
But, Sir Chairman, I have no further questions of this witness, and I want to make a few comments. We have worked with the community on this project. Uh, we also had an earlier zoning change, which was approved by the community, and we are aware of no objections after fi-uh, filing our notice letters. We're replacing a current vacant lot, uh, with a building, and I have uh, a copy and have submitted it in a timely manner, Alderman Maldonado's support letter for this variation. With that, we will be, we are available for any questions, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you very much, everyone. Um, any questions from the board? Okay, we have what we need here. Um, so Ms. Mansour, we'll take this under consideration, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and, um, members of the board. Have a great day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye now.
All right, we're gonna go to calendar number seventy-three dash twenty-two dash Z and seventy-four dash twenty-two dash Z, um, uh, with Counselor Nick Fatikas. So, as Counselor Fatikas gets settled, if anyone's here to object for seventy-three dash twenty-two dash Z or seventy-four dash twenty-two dash Z, please just raise your hand, and we will get you promoted, um, or press star nine if you're on a phone.
Also, Chairman, I don't see the applicant grab lacrosse.
Also, Chairman, I don't see the applicant Greg Lachos, if they are signing under another name, if they can raise their hand.
Okay, great. Let's see.
I mean, it's Nick Fatikas. I, I was actually emailing with Greg within the last couple of minutes. He's been signed on since this morning, so hopefully he could just raise his hand and be promoted.
Yeah, let's see. Barry, could he be under Joanna Waszczewicz? Let's see. Joanna, we are promoting your account. There you go. It looks like you're, you accepted.
Okay.
Hello?
There we go. Is that Greg Lachos?
Yeah, Greg Lachos.
Perfect. Okay, Counselor Fatikas, take it away.
All right, thank you, sir. Again, for the record, my name is Nick Fatikas, and I'm one of the attorneys with the law offices of Sam Banks at two twenty-one North LaSalle Street. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Greg Lachos. Greg owns the subject property at thirty-eight fifty-three North Damon Avenue. The subject lot is improved with a two-story, two-unit principal building at the front of the property and a detached two-story accessory building at the rear. The first floor of the accessory building contains two parking spaces, and the second floor is unfinished space. The applicant is proposing to utilize the newly enacted additional dwelling unit ordinance to permit a legal coach house unit on the second floor of the accessory building. The issue is that the existing building's floor area total is forty-eight point two nine square feet more than the ADU ordinance's limit of seven hundred square feet. So, in order to bring the existing floor area total into compliance, the applicant is seeking a variation to increase the allowable floor area total for an additional dwelling unit from seven hundred square feet to seven hundred and forty-eight point two nine square feet. The applicant is also seeking a companion variation to reduce the subject lot's rear setback from thirty-seven point five feet to thirty point eleven feet in order to permit an open staircase that would provide ingress and egress access to the additional dwelling unit or the coach house unit. I have two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant.
Yep, go right ahead. We were having some sound issues at the end of that, but I heard you, so.
I, I think as, as long as we have the relief in the record, I think we're good. I'll just introduce my witnesses again. Greg Lachos is my first witness. If you want to swear him in, I can, I can begin questioning.
Yep, Greg, will you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Greg Lachos. I live in eighteen thirty-nine West Waveland, Chicago, Illinois, Apartment One, six oh six thirteen.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Greg, again, you own the subject property at thirty-eight fifty-three North Damon?
Yes, correct.
And as I described it, it's improved with a two-story, two-unit principal building and a two-story detached accessory building at the rear. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
And today, the accessory building has two parking spaces on the first floor and unfinished space above.
Yes.
And those are the same conditions that existed in that building when you purchased the property in twenty sixteen, is that right?
Yes, correct.
That, based on your familiarity with the, the building, it's an older brick structure, specifically the accessory building, is an older brick structure at the rear of the lot.
Yes.
And you're now planning to use the additional dwelling unit ordinance to permit a new coach house on the second floor of that structure, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Variations are needed to permit both the floor area in total, as well as the open staircase, to provide access to that unit, is that right?
Yes.
And provided the board grants the relief, your plan is to rent the coach house unit on the open market, is that right?
Yes, correct.
You've provided the board with the summary of your projected costs and expect, expenses, as well as the anticipated return for that additional rental unit?
Yes.
And it's your understanding also that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes, correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. If I can call my second witness, Mr. Bill O'Callio.
Yep, Bill, if you're on, please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Bill O'Callio with Axios Architects, one eighty-eight North Walls, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh six.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Bill, again, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
You've testified in that capacity many times before this board, is that right?
That's correct.
And you designed the proposed, proposed additional dwelling unit conversion for the subject property, is that right?
That's correct.
And is it your professional opinion that the accessory buildings existing, not conforming size and location on the subject lot, create the hardships or practical difficulties requiring the requested variations?
That's correct.
Because again, we, we're trying to permit an existing building area total on the second floor of a non-conforming structure, is that right?
That's correct. The structure is existing. It's been there for many, many years, and it's solid nationally.
And Bill, with respect to the setback reduction, it's required to permit the exterior staircase that would be required to provide ingress and egress to the unit, is that right?
That's correct.
And in part, that's because of the location or the proposed location of those, that exterior stair is really driven by the fact that there's no other place on site to put those stairs, correct?
Correct.
In fact, the, the garage is actually spans the width of the lot.
That's correct.
But even with the technical reduction, neither the principal building's footprints nor the accessory building's footprints will change in any way.
No, it will not.
Bill, is it your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
That's correct.
If you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about the proposal.
Hey. Any additional questions from the board?
Commissioner Sanchez, I want to ask the same question that I asked with regard to the, the other KDU we saw earlier. What about putting the stair in the interior of the garage? Can that be done?
I'll let Bill, I'll let Bill follow up. The short answer is that was how we initially proposed it. The issue of, of that design is that the stair actually counts against our floor area total and would put us over the allowed expansion. So, the only way for us to account for the forty-eight plus or minus square feet that we're already over because of the existing non-conforming structure and provide a legal ingress and egress stair, this was our, our only design. And Bill, if I missed anything, please, please.
No, I mean, just to sum it up, our, right now, we got seven hundred and forty-eight square feet. Originally, we did have, when we submitted the plans, we did have the stair inside, and then we were told that the inside stair on the ground floor counts as part of the seven hundred, which is equivalent to an extra hundred square feet on the ground floor, which then took our ADU unit to seven hundred, to eight hundred and forty-eight square feet, which is about twenty-one percent larger than the allowed seven hundred. So, we were forced to put the stair on the outside.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, everyone, for your time, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have calendar number seventy-seven dash twenty-two dash Z and a bunch more, which I am going to confirm when Scott Orstein is on, that we can take all together, even though a bulk of them are in the continuances section.
Mr. Chairman, so, right, this case, but it has a, a lot of other ones. I actually wasn't sure if you wanted to take all of them now or all of them at, as, as a, you know, part of the continuances.
I'm okay, I'm okay, Counselor, either way, depending on if you have all witnesses right now. If not, we will see them in the continuances.
Okay, well, so, is there a way to see who has checked in? I know we have, we've got a number of people. We've got, you know, people from Learn. It would be John Bennett and Shia Gordon. I've got, you've got the architects from Moody Nolan, Drew Daring, and Rachel Cooper, and then Kathy Dart is here.
You know, like, to me, Counselor, I'm not seeing a few of these names. So, for efficiency, I, I'm not seeing John or Shia.
Okay.
Let's, it honestly shouldn't be too much longer. We're getting there, but let's see these in continuances.
Okay, very good. Just, just. Everybody's expecting. Yeah.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to go to calendar number, then, seventy-eight dash twenty-two dash Z with Counselor John Pikarski. If anyone is on to object to seventy-eight dash twenty-two dash Z, just raise your hand, and we'll get you promoted.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, Counselor.
For the record, my name is John Pikarski. I'm an attorney with offices at fifty-five West Monroe Street, and this afternoon, it's my pleasure to represent Scott Strubel. Mr. Strubel is the owner of the property at eight nineteen West Castlewood Terrace, and we are seeking, excuse me, three variations. The variation of the west side yard setback from five feet to zero, combined side yard setbacks from fifteen feet to nine point two six feet, and a rear setback from thirty-two point two three feet to zero. As you can, this is a strange-looking Castlewood Terrace photograph, because we are the last property in line on the north side, side of, of the, strike that, the south side of the street. This is a photograph of the front of our building. We, by, by way of information, Castlewood Terrace is probably one of the most interesting properties in, in, in the entire north side of the city of Chicago. It is improved with individually designed, interesting buildings that have been preserved in spite of all of the four plus ones and, and multis that have been placed into the neighborhood. Our property is, is truly unusual, because on two sides of it, of us, we are surrounded by parking lots for a hospital that is, it's a psychiatric hospital. The rear yard of, of our building, or of our site, rather, is improved with a two-car garage that has been existing for quite a while. And as you can see by the current picture, the house is, is approximately three feet from the garage. However, the overhang of the house completely in, covers, or almost completely covers that walkway. What we are seeking to do is to utilize the roof deck, the roof of the garage as a deck. In order to do that, we have to provide entrance and egress, and that is what we intend to provide along the north, strike that, the south side of, of the building. We have no neighbors to the south side. We have a parking lot in both instances that is now unfortunately still unutilized. The psychiatric hospital, it is, my understanding, is, as you can see in the, the current photo, is, is going to be reactivated, but we don't know when. We cannot place our staircase anywhere else except along the lot line as proposed, and that would be the south, south lot line. The property in question measures fifty frontage feet by the irregular depth of one hundred and fifteen feet for a total of fifty-seven hundred fifty-five square feet. The property does not have a, an alley at the rear, so that we must enter southbound off of Castlewood Terrace and make a right turn into our two-car garage. There is no space that is not utilized on the site for open air or open space, so we are suggesting that we be allowed to place the, so, open space, which is permitted, on the garage roof. As you can see, the stairs are parallel to the rear lot line. They interfere with no one, as I said, because that is where a, a parking lot for the psychiatric hospital is located. I have with me two witnesses, the owner, Scott Strubel, S.T.R.U.B.E.L., and the architect, Leanne Huesdens, L.E.I.H., L.E.I.G.H.A.N.N.H.E.U.S.D.E.N.S. I would call as my first witness is Scott Strubel. Scott, are you there?
Yes, Counselor Pikarski, I am.
Good. You're the owner of the subject site, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you would like to utilize the roof of your.
Hold on, Counselor, one second. I'm just going to get Scott sworn in. So, Scott, can you please state your name and address?
Scott Strubel, eight nineteen West Castlewood Terrace in Chicago.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Scott, you, you would like to be able to utilize the roof of your garage for an outdoor patio, is that correct?
That is correct.
And in order to access that patio, you need to provide stairs, is that correct?
That is also correct.
And the only place we can put them is parallel to the rear lot line, is that correct?
That is correct. That's the only location available.
And that will not interfere with your property and will not in any way infringe on other people's property inasmuch as the next door, adjacent next door neighbor is a parking lot, is that correct?
That is all correct.
Now, were you present when I made the initial presentation of this matter?
Yes, I was.
And did you and I work out a, an affidavit as to the factors and, and contain, necessary to obtain the variations sought?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
And if I ask you the same questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same?
Yes, they would.
I have no further questions of Scott.
Okay, great, Counselor, maybe we go to the next, to Leanne, and then we'll circle back with questions from the board.
I would call as my next witness, Leanne Houston. Leanne, are you there? I hope.
Yeah, she's, Leanne, you're just muted, but I do see you on.
Oh, okay.
There you go. Quick, I'll swear you in, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Leanne Houston, Licensed Architect, nine four nine Design, nine forty nine North Woolcut, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two two.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Now, you are the project architect for the proposal, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Is there any, go right to the point, is there any place on this site where you could, the stairs to the roof deck, except where you have located them?
Yeah, no, there really is no place on the ground that's available other than this location, which took us a kind of a while to figure out, but yes, this is the best location. And there's really no other location. There's stairs going down to the basement along the west property line, just to the north of the garage. And then, of course, the entrance into the back of the building is the stairs you pointed out before with a roof overhang, we couldn't get the stairs to go up along there. So this is really the only location that would be suitable to access this garage rooftop deck.
In your opinion, will the proposal in any way alter the essential character of the neighborhood in which it's located?
No.
Okay. And clearly, this is a unique piece of property, which has no alley and which is fifty feet by one hundred and fifteen feet, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you and I create an affidavit as to the criteria for the zoning variations sought?
Yes.
And if I ask you the same questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes.
I have no further questions of Leanne.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Do we have any questions from the board? Okay, we've got all the information that we need on this one. So thank you very much for your time and we will take this under consideration.
Thank you very much, bye bye.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, you too. All right, we're going to calendar number seventy nine dash twenty two dash S. If anyone is on to object to seventy nine dash twenty two dash S, please raise your hand. And we will get you promoted. As the applicant and Counselor is getting situated, I'm going to go ahead and read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a two thousand eight hundred and eighty square foot residential two dwelling unit building with a two car garage, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated July twenty third, twenty twenty one, prepared by Ellipsis Architecture, and that prior to issuance of permits, the facade material for the detached garage is cement board siding to match the residential building.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tolar Berberian, I am counsel for the applicant. Mike Drew from the applicant should be on as well. I'm not sure if he's been promoted.
Yes, we have a James M. Drew.
Yes, I am on.
Excellent. So as the chairman indicated this afternoon, we're here to request a special use at twenty eight eighteen West Harrison. This building is a, intended to have two dwelling units in it. It is located in a C zoning district, which does not permit this arrangement without a special use. And so that is why we're before you today. I will just add to this that the structure is one of forty affordable units that are, will, are currently being constructed at this location. They're part of a community that the applicant is working to build here. And all of the, there was a mention of a condition as to the garage siding. All of the garages that are being built as part of this development have the same material that we are proposing, which is a vinyl siding. And that vinyl siding was chosen as part of the approval that was received for all of these affordable homes, which was reviewed by the Department of Housing. They go through a very extensive review. Their, one of their main policy objectives is to ensure that all affordable dwelling units that are processed through the Affordable Requirements Ordinance can stand up to the thirty year affordability requirement on those units. And so those materials have been sort of vetted by Department of Housing for their durability. And they were approved as part of that process. And so we would ask that this be approved without that additional condition. Of course, if the board feels that they would be uncomfortable approving the proposal without the addition of the condition, we would adhere to it, but there is a reason why that siding is proposed in this situation, and so I just wanted to make that clear. But I would like to just ask Mike to introduce himself and then we'll pause for the chairman to swear you in. Mike, can you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, James Michael, James Michael Drew. My address is thirty one fifty one North Lincoln, Unit six oh nine, Chicago, six oh six six one.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thanks, Mike, and I'm sorry. I just want to make sure Peter Poulos is on as well, our appraiser.
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect, thanks. Okay, Mike, as you know, we submitted extensive findings of fact in connection with this application. And among the materials we submitted was an affidavit we prepared on your behalf, which you reviewed and signed. If you were to continue to testify this afternoon, would your testimony be consistent with the information and statements you made in that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Excellent, I don't think I have anything else for Mr. Drew at this time, but of course, he's available to ask questions, should the board have any? And then, Peter, can you please also state your name and address for the record?
All right, Peter Poulos, Certified General Appraiser with Illinois, address is at one zero one zero nine South Eighty Third Avenue, Pelos Hills, Illinois.
Thank you, Peter, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, and we recognize your expertise.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter, you prepared a report in connection with this application, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we submitted that report together with our findings of fact. Peter, can you just confirm that you did a site visit and, you know, assessed the neighborhood in order to prepare the report we submitted?
Yes, I did, that's correct.
Excellent, and in your opinion, would you conclude that the proposed special use would meet all of the standards required for the approval of a special use in the city of Chicago?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, I don't have anything further for Peter either, we're happy to take questions from the board.
Any questions from the board at this time? And then, Counselor, I do just want to get someone from DPD on to give an overview on the conditions. But first, any questions from the board at this time? Okay, let's, let's go to DPD either, I know, I believe both Nancy Bradzovic and Steve Valenziano are on. So whichever of you can talk about the department's recommendation, just as it relates to the certain conditions that Counselor mentioned. Just give us a second, Counselor.
Mr. Chair, I can jump on, and if Steve wants to add anything, you know, he can add on, I believe. DPD historically recommends, you know, the highest quality materials when things come through for special use, particularly for special uses related to residential. Our goal is to try to make sure that we're minimizing added costs for maintenance. In its, our, our opinion, just based on what we've seen in the standards, that vinyl siding just doesn't have that same low maintenance cost to the end user that, that the other materials would have, that kind of cement board. Vinyl siding is known to at high heat, they can crack and warp. And they can also have issues when it gets extreme cold. So it's one of those materials that through the extreme material, extreme hot and colds, could have a lot of issues. So our, our recommendation is based on trying to maintain something that's lower cost, longer term for the end user, thanks.
Thanks, Nancy, and Counselor, can you just one more time for us, give us another brief summary on, on why you disagree with that condition?
Absolutely, Mike, would you like to address that?
Yeah, I will, thanks, Tolar. Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, I will address that. This, we don't object to the department's guidelines, and I appreciate Nancy's explanation of them. The frustration comes in, in that this is, as we said, part of a forty unit affordable housing development, a community that will have forty homes in it when we're completed. We've completed Phase One, which is a brick that's on Congress. And those units, seven units have been sold and occupied. It's part of the PD twelve fifty two, which was our compliance for the compliance with the ARO ordinance. This is a development that we're doing at Blackhawk and Kingsbury, where we have committed to do a total of seventy affordable units. So as part of this process, this was, the design was vetted by the Department of Housing. It was vetted by their ARO department, the the CAC department within Department of Housing. And it was approved and recorded against the property in an AHAC that requires us to follow all, everything that was in the plans that was approved by thoroughly vetted and recorded against the property. And if we vary from that, we do not get a release of the AHAC and we won't get a sign off from CAC. So we are doing these garages that are in lieu of pads that are normally done on affordable units. We are providing secured garages, which will provide the buyers of these properties with additional storage area and secured housing for their cars. And those have all been approved with vinyl siding. So we don't object to this. If Nancy's position is hard, we will, we will put the material on that they request, but it won't be consistent with what was approved by the Department of Housing and what is recorded against in an AHAC. So we respectfully would ask that it just be consistent with those plans that have been approved. By the way, the total investment in this, this offsite housing is in excess of twelve million dollars. And it will provide affordable housing for family sized units, they're all three and four bedroom units. And we're proud of it, it's a significant accomplishment and validation of the ARO, the Alderman is very supportive of it because of the investment in the community as well as the compliance with the offsite affordable requirements. So the only objection that we hear being the siding on the garages, we will go along with it, but I wanted to give the background to the, the board so they know why we've, we've raised this request.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, to just add some information, the CAC body that Mr. Drew is referring to is the construction and compliance arm of the Department of Housing. And they do extensive reviews of these plans as they are conceived. So these plans were reviewed at the planning stage. And as Mr. Drew mentioned, there have been several of these units constructed. And those units are constructed, excuse me, inspected throughout and inspected at the end, once they're done as well. And they will, the, the construction and compliance team of the Department of Housing will verify that everything is done to the T based on the plans that we submitted and they approve. So we are, we have a very, you know, distinct interest in making sure that what we build is consistent with what was in the plans.
Okay, great, thank you. And I do think we just got, yeah, and Steve Valenziano's hand is raised, so would be great to get his take as well. Steve, if you could, if you could pop in.
Yeah, Steve Valenziano, Department of Planning and Development. These plans will still have to go through a building permit process, which requires a zoning review, which is why we're here today, is to complete that zoning review. It needs to go through this body. You will have final approval, whether the materials change or not, as long as the parking garage structure, the size, location, does not change from what was permitted. Any material that is in kind with what was approved, especially if it's a higher quality material, which is what we typically like to see, especially on affordable projects or in areas that maybe don't get the same care and attention of quality materials. That's what the department might likes to see. That will not change the Department of Housing's approval of the project once it is built or constructed. I can, I, from my experience, that would not be the case. So that, that, you know, for whatever that means, it's up to the board, how, whatever direction you want to go in. But that is still our recommendation.
Okay, James, does that, and does that make sense to you, or do you have any questions for Steve?
That makes sense, and Steve, thanks, good to see you again for weighing in on that. I just, again, make the point that it's, it's difficult. It's difficult enough to develop and deliver a project that has been approved by the Department of Housing, ARO department all the way through, and to have another agency, if you will, weigh in on, on, on materials is a little bit frustrating. I'm sure we can get by it, but that will require an amendment that CAC would have to understand as to why we've changed the siding on one of twenty four structures, so.
This is Jolene Saul, has, has anyone talked to DOH about this specific issue?
The first time this came up is in connection with this submittal.
Yeah, that's my question.
So this is the first we've heard of DPD's preference on this. And again, we've had, there's forty units that are approved with the materials as submitted. So, no, this is the first we've heard about it, so.
So sorry, just to, I want to, you're saying you're just hearing of this condition today?
No, no, we were told about it late last week, it was, I believe, Thursday of last week.
Right.
Okay, so again, did anyone talk to DOH about this specific issue?
We have not had a conversation with the Department of Housing about it.
So, okay, so they might be fine with it, we don't know, because no one talked to them about it?
They might be fine with it, and, and that is only one of the reasons why we're objecting. The other is that not only has this been long vetted, it is also going to create a situation where we have several other garage structures that have a different material. We want to make sure that our community is consistent across the board. And we have, you know, that we're interested in making sure that all of the residents have the same siding.
Well, Chairman, Steve Valenziano again, I would be happy to, if you want to, I guess, stay mute on the subject of the garage siding, I will personally work with Commissioner of Housing in resolving it at the time of permitting. I will personally work with Commissioner of Housing in resolving it at the time of permitting. That, that seems as far as to meet the Department of Planning's recommendation. So if you want to just say it otherwise meets the, the, you know, the design that is shown on these plans. And I, I will then work with the Department of Housing at, during permitting to address the subject.
I think that's a, that's a good suggestion. And I appreciate that, Steve. We have time. This will be probably the last unit delivered. I'm just apprehensive about coming in with something that doesn't match the submitted and recorded documents that DOH and more specifically CAC has in front of them. So if we can, we can resolve this in advance, I think that's a good solution.
Great. And just, just to confirm for, for our purposes, Steve, you're okay with amending, with us amending the recommendation in our vote in a way that strikes the specificity behind the siding and just says that otherwise meets the design requirements?
I would, I would change, or I would, I guess authorize the change of our recommendation. I mean, you're, it's your final vote, but I, I'm saying that if it, if it helps you move forward on this, I will, at the, I guess, at the time of the actual permit review and approval through the building permit process, I will work with the Department of Housing to, to figure it out. So, so if there, if, you know, if we can work it out, we're going to still, the Department of Planning would still prefer, you know, a hardy plank type siding, but I will, I will work on that with the Department of Housing.
Okay.
Because it's not going to substantively change the, the project.
Yep. And so, but when we think of, of voting and our vote's tied to the rec, so, you know, then are you, if you're going to work on, work with this later, we should probably, if we decide to vote that route, we should strike that part of the recommendation.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Any, any questions from the board? Okay, I think we got what we need here. So thanks, everyone, for, for tuning in and getting on, and we'll take some of consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we're now going to go to calendar number. We're moving into the continuances. And that brings us to calendar number four eighteen dash twenty-one dash S. As the applicant gets settled, I may go ahead and read the department's recommendation. And if anyone's here to object on four eighteen dash twenty-one dash S, raise your hand or press star nine and we'll get you promoted. Okay, so the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed permanent makeup and body art tattoo facility. So Tybin Hernandez, if you're on, let us know.
Hi, yes, I'm on.
Great. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Tybin Hernandez. My address is fifty-one forty-six North Kenneth Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six three zero.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Perfect. Thank you. And you are also the new looking for your expert who is, one second.
He should be calling in on his phone.
Yeah, we've got a phone caller. Okay, he has permission to talk. So if you want to mute, just try to talk.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Ro, my name is Roger Porticar.
Okay, great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So you're the expert on this.
Fantastic. Okay.
Okay, so you can hear us, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you are the expert on this matter, correct?
Yeah, I'm a certified general appraiser and they wanted this in a certain format. And I didn't see this so recently, there was a, there's a format.
We'll get there. We're just taking a little bit of, making sure everyone's on. So Alderman Gardner, I know you're on as well. Do you want to speak at the beginning of this? At the end? We can, we can go however you want.
Yeah, this is, this is Marie Joyce again, Alderman Gardner's admin. And I just wanted to state I can go in the beginning, if that's okay.
Yep, that's perfect. So we will, we will just start with you and you've previously been sworn. And then we will get to Ms. Hernandez. So you can go right ahead, Ms. Joyce.
Just wanted to say that I know the Alderman supports this and feels like it'll be a great addition to the community as well as that specific area.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for, for staying on and pressing the support. It's super helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hernandez, will you please state your name and address again?
My name is Tybin Hernandez. My address is fifty-one forty-six North Kenneth Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six three zero.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Okay, tell us a little bit about your application, why you're here today.
I am here today to apply to add permanent makeup into my existing school under the business name Beauty Bladed Company. And we currently are a beauty school teaching nails and aesthetics. And permanent makeup would be a, a great addition to what we offer there.
Okay, great. And can you explain to the board a little bit of your background in the area?
Yes. So I grew up in Portage Park. I, two thousand and eleven, I opened up a salon in Humboldt Park. And in two thousand and sixteen, my family purchased the property that is forty-three sixty North Milwaukee Avenue as a second location to expand and open up a beauty school. I've been doing permanent makeup since two thousand and fourteen. I am a current member of the Society of Permanent Cosmetic Professional, as well as a recognized certified permanent cosmetic professional through the organization. And so I, yeah, that's my background. If you need further information.
Yeah, no, thank you. So do you intend, I know you'll have students, do you intend you have full-time employees as well?
Um, I do, and well, currently managing two locations, I have only part-time employees. Until my enrollment of students go up, then I will be able to afford to hire full-time employees. So right now, it's just part-time employees.
Okay, and the, the students, am I correct that the students will be giving services to, to people in the public?
Yes. So part of the permanent program would be an apprenticeship under my supervision. It is a seven-day program that I have designed. And also, the, the public would be signing a release of liability to allow a student to work under my supervision.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Any other questions from the board for Ms. Hernandez? Okay, we might circle back with a few more. I want to go now to Roger Porticar. So Roger, if you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, this Roger Porticar is twenty-four oh nine Evergreen Woodridge, six oh five one seven.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, great. And just because we haven't seen you before at the board, could you give a little bit of an overview on, on your background and, and what makes you an expert in this field?
I'm a certified general. I've done various commercial properties and office buildings downtown. I did a Sears Tower one ten for a turnaround. And when it was thirty percent vacant, I've seen different properties and I recommended to people things that would improve things because over the last ten years or more, a lot of retail, there's, there's no demand anymore. So, so the people are trying to, trying to figure out something that they could do to improve, you know, the location and their situation. So I've done various properties of, of everything.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will acknowledge you as an expert for this specific matter. And then wondering if you have any notes or anything you want to bring up related to this matter at hand?
Yeah, I have the, which I, I gave to Ty Hernandez. It's basically a summary. Should I, should I go over this with you? It'll probably be, I could do it in probably five minutes.
Yeah, I think you can give a super, super brief synopsis just of your view on the business, maybe, you know, one minute.
Oh, okay. It's a beauty school located forty-three sixteen North Milwaukee Avenue. And right along that location, there's, there's a bartending school that's less than a half a block away. And about a quarter block away, there's a preschool. So it seems, you know, and there's some new condominiums across the street with storefront, first level. But the property is completely rehabbed fairly recently, has three sections. It's a, it's a brick building, one story, sixteen ninety-three square feet. And it's a deluxe interior and it's about a seventy percent basement. Here again, it's, it's all rehab. They, they spent a lot, you know, a lot of money with this. And I saw in the, the section seventeen thirteen zero nine zero five dash eight, they have five item criteria and this property fits those criteria.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, any questions from the board for either Ms. Hernandez or Mr. Porticar?
And if you want, if you go over the, the, the five, basically five short paragraphs criteria that the property fits into. And, and on the report that I gave her, I gave her aerial and, and pictures of the property. And it shows that the street looks real nice, that the bar, which I'm looking at it right now, bartender school is, is two hundred feet away, maybe, with a big sign up on the street there. And one is down the, down the block there, but there's five criteria, if you want me to read off the items. And again, I could do this in, in three minutes.
Yeah, no, no, I think, I think we're okay because we've, we've definitely got our criteria and we've got your report. So, you know, do you swear to your report?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Then I think I didn't hear any questions from the board, so we can close this house out and we will take it under consideration, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Have a good weekend.
You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, bye. All right, let's go to calendar numbers. Four thirty-seven dash twenty-one dash S and four thirty-eight dash twenty-one dash Z. We're going to have Counselor Nick Fatikas on these. And I will read the department's recommendation as everyone gets settled. But meantime, if anyone's here to object on these matters, raise your hand or press star nine. Okay, first, so for the special use, four thirty-seven dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish vehicle, outdoor storage to serve an outdoor, to, to serve an auto dealership located at another location, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated February third, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by the CD group. Okay, Nick, if we've got your applicant, we can go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Howard Orloff Imports Incorporated. The applicant controls the subject property at eighteen oh four West Armitage Avenue. The subject site measures seventy-two point oh eight feet wide by a hundred and twenty-four point eight six feet deep and contains approximately nine thousand and three square feet of total lot area. Until recently, the subject property had been improved with a tall one-story contractor warehouse building and accessory surface parking area. The applicant, as you can see from the photo on display now, has since taken down the one-story building and intends to develop the subject property with a new surface parking lot that would be used to store cars for the Howard Orloff dealership located at nineteen twenty-four North Polina, which is just about three hundred and eighty feet to the east of the subject site. The proposed storage lot would have twenty-eight off-street parking spaces for service cars and new car inventory. In order to permit the outdoor storage of vehicles, the applicant is required to obtain a special use because the subject property is located in a C two dash one zoning district. The applicant is also seeking variations to the front and west side setbacks in order to construct a six-foot-tall security fence around the perimeter of the site. The applicant, excuse me. And additionally, given the specific intended use of the subject property, the applicant is seeking variations pursuant to the landscape ordinance to reduce the number of interior trees and waive the hose bib requirement for the property. I have three witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Joseph Coletta, our project architect, Mr. Thomas Ted Eckhart, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Terrance O'Brien. And Mr. Chairman, before I call my first witness, I wanted to amend portions of our variation application on its face. Originally, we sought to reduce the required onsite landscaped area total from five hundred and sixty-eight square feet to three hundred and thirty-five square feet. In working with the department and Alderman Wagisback's office, we've come up with a revised plan that actually now exceeds the onsite landscaped area total with six hundred and eighty-two square feet being provided. So the variation request specific to the total landscaped area is no longer applicable. We also originally sought to reduce the number of interior trees from five to zero. Again, the redesign plan actually allows us to install three trees. So I'd ask to amend that specific portion of the relief for a, a technical reduction from five to three. Other than that, the remaining relief is applicable and required for permitting our intended use of the property. And with that, sir, I'd ask to call my first witness, Mr. Joe Coletta.
Great, thanks, Counselor. And all those, those amendments are noted on the record as they're closer to being aligned. So, Mr. Coletta, can you please state your name and address?
Joe, I think you're on mute.
I've been at work. I'm sorry. Joseph Coletta, nineteen twenty-four North Polina Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two two.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Joe, again, you're the secretary and vice president of the applicant Howard Orloff Imports Incorporated?
Yes.
And that entity again, controls the subject property at eighteen oh four West Armitage, is that right?
Yes.
As I described in my introduction, the subject lot is currently vacant and unimproved?
It is.
And you're proposing to redevelop the property as a surface parking lot with twenty-eight parking spaces to store auto inventory for the dealership, is that right?
Yes.
And again, the dealership is located at nineteen twenty-four North Polina, right?
Yes.
And that's just about three hundred and eighty feet or so from the subject site?
That's right.
In order to permit the outdoor storage of vehicles, a special use is required because the subject property is located in a C two dash one zoning district, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And additionally, variations are required to permit the perimeter fencing and onsite landscaping elements for the lot, right?
That's correct, yes.
Now, in terms of operations and usage, the lot will be accessible only to your employees during regular business hours, which are eight AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday, is that right?
Yes.
And because the subject property is located at the corner of West Armitage and Northwood, any traffic that would be generated would actually avoid the residential areas north and west of the subject site, is that fair?
Yes.
In fact, the only direct way to travel from the In fact, the only direct way to travel from the subject lot back to the dealership is eastbound on West Armitage.
That's correct.
Um, and based on the existing traffic patterns, you believe that uh the proposed use will not have any new impact or spillover into the residential uh neighbors, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And Joe, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes, it is.
And if you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistent with those uh written statements?
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, my next uh witness is uh Thomas Eckert.
Yeah, Counselor, I'm just gonna butt in really fast. I think the board probably put this together. Um, but we're also hearing with these five twenty dash twenty-one dash Z, which Nick, you, you addressed. I just didn't at the beginning um say that we were hearing this matter as well, but they're all associated.
Okay, no, no, you're right. They were filed, there, yes, there was a background where we had to file additional relief, which is why one portion of the case appears as uh earlier in the agenda, separate from the original filing. So as long as all three are covered, we're good to go.
Perfect, just wanted to clarify for the board.
Are you on?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Chairman, would you mind swearing him in?
Yes, so. Please state your name and address.
Thomas D. Eckard Senior. My nickname is Ted. My address is two forty-nine East Prospect Avenue, Mount Prospect, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you.
And uh Ted, again, you have previously testified before this board, is that right?
Yes.
And you designed the uh site improvements for the proposed outdoor vehicle storage lot at the subject property, is that right?
Yes.
In order to permit your plan, your, and specifically the six-foot-tall uh security fence, uh, we're required to obtain variations to the front and um side setback, correct?
Yes.
And is it your professional opinion that the hardship or practical difficulty specific to the setback request is the fact that the subject property, which is zone C two, abuts residential zoning districts to the west?
Yes.
Because again, on its own, a C two zoning lot does not have a front or side setback requirement?
That's correct.
Additionally, the reduced setbacks are required to help maintain sufficient parking, uh sufficient spacing for not only the parking stalls but also the drive aisles on that seventy-two-foot-wide lot, is that right?
Yes.
To be clear, though, the fence being proposed along the Armitage and Wood Street frontages, which are the primary frontages visible to the public way, would be decorative ornamental fencing, correct?
Yes.
And the portions of the fence between uh our property and our neighbor to the west, as well as along the alley, would be a typical board-on-board uh wooden fence?
Yes.
But we're also seeking to reduce the onsite landscaping requirements, specifically the interior tree count and the hose bib requirement, is that right?
Yes.
Now, with respect to that relief, the practical difficulty necessitating the variations is that adding those elements um would actually reduce the use and functionality of the proposed storage lot?
That is correct.
And again, in this case, the intended use of the property is an idle vehicle storage lot that would not be accessible to the general public and not have any permanent building structure built on it, is that right?
That is correct.
So instead of adding more interior trees, our solution was to call for more generous perimeter landscaping along Armitage and Wood Street, is that right?
Yes.
And specifically, you're proposing to install nine new trees between our fence and the property line and two new parkway trees along the perimeter of the lot, is that right?
Yes.
And that's also in addition to maintaining four existing parkway trees um that already exist at the property.
That is correct.
You'll also be replacing portions of the sidewalk along Wood Street, um which are at today, just not in really good condition, is that right?
Yes.
The, the point we're trying to make is that even with the landscape variations, there will still be significant landscape and publicly improvements made as part of this program, is that right?
Yes.
Now, uh, and with respect to the hose bib, it becomes truly an unnecessary feature because, again, we're not proposing any permanent structure building on the lot.
Correct.
Uh, with respect to the lot design itself, all the vehicle uh access will come from the public alley that runs along the rear of the property?
Yes.
And that uh access comes off of Wood Street, correct?
Yes.
And that allows you to remove the driveway on West Armitage, as well as the existing concrete apron on Wood Street, so that we, again, we have that one point of ingress at the rear of the lot?
That's correct.
And in your professional opinion, do you believe if the board uh grants the relief, that the proposed site plan will work and function in a safe and efficient way?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we've provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, my last witness is Mr. Terry O'Brien. I believe he was sworn in earlier. Um, but I just want to double-check that with you before I start asking questions.
Yep, uh, yeah, we confirm that Terry's been sworn in and we've acknowledged his expertise.
Thank you. Um, Terry, the scope of uh your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
Yes, I, I, it, right, that was my assignment also to address and consider the criteria for variations.
And uh as part of your evaluation, you physically inspected the subject property and the surrounding area?
Yes, several times.
And based on your inspection of the median area, is it your professional opinion that the proposed special use is consistent and compatible with the surrounding land uses?
Yes, and if I, I'd like to, if I could, just quote from the zoning ordinance, section seventeen dash one dash three, excuse me, oh one oh six dash A, where they talk about the primary purpose of the C two motor vehicle-related commercial district, which the subject is currently zoned. And then there, it says it's to accommodate a very broad range of businesses, represents the highest intensity business or commercial zoning district. It allows nearly any type of business service or commercial use, including those involving outdoor operations and storage.
So, uh, and again, with that um kind of background on the property, the underlying zoning, is it your professional opinion that the proposed special use will meet all the approval criteria provided by the code?
Yes, I addressed them and I believe it will meet all that, all the criteria.
And Terry, uh, with respect to the variations that are being sought, do you also believe, in your professional opinion, um, that the approval criteria have been met?
Yes, again, I addressed all those criteria within my report. I would like to make one observation. Subsequent to the preparation of this report, there, would they change the configuration somewhat of the lot? I, in the report, my report said twenty-five parking spaces, it's actually twenty-eight, so I just want to correct that for the record.
Thank you, Terry. And Mr. Chairman, just uh on that point, um initially, the program was for a twenty-eight-space lot. Um, when we worked again with D P D. and Alderman Wagisback's office to come up with the uh plan that's being presented to the board today, it actually increased not only the onsite uh landscape total, but also the number of uh legal parking spaces onsite, so twenty-eight is the correct uh proposed number of, of spaces onsite. Uh, and Terry, you have prepared a written zoning analysis report summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And if your understanding, my office has submitted a copy of the report with our findings of facts in the middle, is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, Terry, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have uh about the proposal.
Great, thank you, everyone. Um, do we have any questions from the board for anyone who's spoken? Okay, we've got the information we need, so thank you very much, everyone, for your time and enjoy the weekend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to a um ten-minute recess. Um, which brings us back at four oh five P M. Central Standard Time. Commissioner Toya Stackens, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Sol?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are back, and we are going to move now to calendar numbers 502-21-S and 503-21-Z. These will be with Council Fatikas. If anyone is on the call to object to 502 or 503, please raise your hand or press star nine and we'll get you promoted. Council Fatikas, I see that you're on. Let's make sure we have your applicant and then I'm going to read the department's recommendation.
Yeah, I see Zafar, Michael Worthman, Terrence O'Brien, and Eric Erickson. Those should be the folks participating in the presentation.
Okay, perfect. Then I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. As it has a little bit more length than usual. So for calendar number 502-21-S, "The Department of Planning and Development recommends denial of the proposed gas station and accessory retail convenience store with office space on second floor above." According to the Chicago Department of Transportation, CDOT, "This area is among the city's top crash sites, and development of this site with an intensive vehicular use "with multiple curb cuts along Elston and Homer is highly likely to compound that situation "and have an adverse impact on the general welfare of the surrounding neighborhood." "The truncated site configuration effectively results in the gas station use being developed on the southern portion lot, "encompassing approximately 11,130 square feet of the total site area, "which is well below the 20,000-square-foot minimum lot area requirement for gas stations." "The northern parking lot with the 15-foot-wide driveway and tight parking configuration "is highly likely to result in vehicular conflicts, both on the site "and for vehicles trying to enter and exit the site concurrently, "which in turn is highly likely to cause additional conflicts at the adjacent intersection." "Further, although designated to limit exits to right turns only, "without a physical barrier, left turns are not restricted, and such movements so close to the intersection "pose added potential for traffic disruption and increased crashes." "The southern parking lot with pumps in an offset configuration "will generate vehicular conflicts and site access issues "when the fueling locations are near or at capacity "and force some drivers to exit by backing out of the site onto Homer and potentially into inbound traffic." "The number and location of curb cuts on Homer is also problematic, as CDOT notes concerns with potential for increased conflicts "between the vehicles making left turn movements into and of these driveways in close proximity." "Further, the congested and compact layout of the gas station pumps, "the slope of the site along Ashland and the angular configuration of the lot forces a tight route for the fueling truck access." "The fuel truck's inbound route forces the truck into existing parking along the south side of Homer "and into oncoming westbound traffic, "and when exiting, the fuel truck must cross over into opposing northbound traffic on Elston, "potentially blocking traffic and increasing risk for head-on accidents "as the truck enters and crosses over into opposing northbound traffic." "This proposed intensive vehicular use, along with the congested site plan and lot configuration, "increased number and location of curb cuts, and the high frequency and volume of traffic "will adversely impact pedestrian safety and comfort, both onsite and along the Elston and Homer public rights of way "and bicyclist safety along Elston." "Further, this proposal does not comply with all the use standards for gas stations, "as the location and design of the driveways for this heavy vehicular use "will adversely affect the safety and efficiency of traffic circulation on adjoining streets." "Reference, Section 17-9-0109-F. "Based on the foregoing, it is the department's recommendation that the proposal to establish a gas station "and an accessory retail convenience store with office space on second floor above "be denied, as it does not comply with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, "is not compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site plan and project design, "does not promote pedestrian safety and comfort, "is not in the interest of the public convenience, and will have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the community." Okay, Council, you can take it away.
All right, I appreciate it, Chairman. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Elston Petroleum, LTD. The applicant has a contract to purchase the subject property at 1940 North Elston Avenue. The subject property consists of an irregularly shaped triangular lot "that contains approximately 16,834 square feet of total lot area." "As you can see from the survey and photos provided with our findings of back to middle, "the property basically functions with four street frontages: "Ashland to the west, Armitage to the north, Elston to the east, and Homer to the south." "The property is improved with a one- and two-story commercial building that formerly operated "with a 7-Eleven franchise at grade and independent offices above." "The applicant is proposing to adapt and reuse the existing building and establish a new five-pump gas station at the site." "The plans call for the installation now of code-compliant landscaping and fencing, "as well as 12 off-street parking spaces for employee and customer use." "In order to permit the gas station, the applicant is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in an M3-3 zoning district." "We're also seeking a variation to reduce the lot area total required for the gas station "from 20,000 square feet to 16,834 square feet." "Again, the lottery area total is a direct result of the subject lot's irregular triangular shape." "I have four witnesses available to testify this afternoon. "On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Zafar Hussein, "our project architect, Mr. Eric Erickson, "our MAI appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien, "and our traffic engineer, Mr. Michael Worthman." "And, Mr. Chairman, before I call my first witness, I did want to make the board aware of a number of planned changes that were made "during our review of the project with DPD." "First, we reduced the number of pumping islands from six to five. "That change was made to improve site circulation for vehicles coming both to and from the property." "Second, we modified the points of ingress and egress on the Elston Street side of the property "and made them right-in, right-out." "The department's letter of recommendation referenced those points, "and if conditions are imposed, that additional improvements be incorporated to ensure right-in, right-out. "We're absolutely open to those conditions." "I wanted to make sure that point was made clear for the record." "And again, the right-in, right-out was specifically done "to raise concerns about the existing traffic conditions north of the property at the intersection of Armitage and Elston." "And I'll let our traffic engineer speak to those conditions in further detail, "but the goal was to direct traffic southbound onto Elston away from that intersection." "And these changes are reflected again in the revised plans "that were submitted to DPD as recently as last night "at about 10 o'clock at night, and I just wanted to make sure that those changes are, again, reflected on the record." "And with that, I'd ask to call my first witness, Mr. Zafar Hussein."
Right, and thanks. And before we swear, "before we go swearing in, how I'm going to run this, just process-wise, because we have the zoning administrator, Patrick Murphy, on, and Bill Higgins from CDOT. "I'm going to do this somewhat parallel to how we run just objected matters typically. "So, Nick, if you go through your applicant and your witnesses, "then I'm going to turn, we're going to want to hear from Patrick, from DPD and CDOT, "and then we'll go back to rebuttal and closing."
Oh, that's great.
Nancy, I see your hand raised. Let me know if you have issue with that process, or if you have something else to bring up.
I just have something else to add. Paul Sajavec from Alderman Wagsburg's office is on. I think he's in the attendee holding area.
Okay.
I don't know if he just hasn't accepted the promotion yet.
Good, yeah. And Paul, you just, thank you for that, Nancy. You've just, there we go. And Paul, "when you're on, if you could just unmute and tell us which part of this process you want to be a part of, "whether you'd like to speak at the beginning with the objectors or at the end."
Um, I'm fine with speaking with the objectors, if that's okay with the process.
Let's do it that way. So we'll turn to objectors as DPD, CDOT, and the Alderman's office.
Right.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, with that, Nick, "I'll swear in your first witness, if that sounds good."
Yes, Zafar Hussein.
Great, Zafar, can you please state your name and address?
Zafar Hussein, 6758 North Lemay, Lincolnwood, 60712.
Great, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Zafar, again, you're the president of the applicant, Elston Petroleum, LTD?
Yes.
And that entity has a contract to purchase the subject property located at 1940 North Elston Avenue, is that right? Zafar, can you, can you speak up, please?
Yes.
As I stated in my introduction, the plan is to establish a five-pump gas station at the subject site, is that right?
Yes.
And we'll get into the building lot, building and lot details with our architect, "but generally speaking, your plan is to remove the one-story portion of the existing building "on the south side of the property and adapt and reuse the remaining two-story portion of the building, correct?
Yes.
"The first floor will contain a retail convenience store that will operate accessory to the gas station?
Yes.
"And the second floor will be used for administrative offices, is that right?
Yes.
"And by removing the one-story portion of the building, you're able to provide a larger vehicle circulation area on the south side of the property, is that right?
Yes.
"And that change also allows you to incorporate six off-street parking spaces for customers who actually want to park and go into the store, correct?
Correct.
Zafar, you have about 20 years of experience in the gas station industry, is that right?
Yes.
You currently own and operate four stations in the Chicago, in the city of Chicago?
Yes.
And you've previously testified before this board as a gas station owner and operator, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, with respect to the proposed operations at the subject site, the gas station would operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, correct?
Yes.
"The convenience store will be staffed 24 hours a day, but overnight access would be limited based on a need and demand, "as well as for security purposes, is that right?
Yes.
"And you anticipate hiring up to 15 employees to oversee the store's day-to-day operations?
Yes.
"And based on your experience, you believe that that amount of staffing is sufficient for a store of this size?
Yes.
So far, is your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
"And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
"Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, my next witness is Mr. Eric Erickson.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Erickson, will you state your name and address, please?
My name is Eric Erickson. I am at 3816 Lisette Lane, Glendale, Illinois.
Great, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eric, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And you designed the program and site improvements for the proposed five-pump gas station at the subject site, is that right?
Yes, I did.
Is it your professional opinion that the subject lot's atypical triangular shape "creates the particular hardship or practical difficulty requiring the requested lot area variation?
Yes.
More specifically, the subject lot narrows north to south "because both North Ashland and North Elston run at an angle, is that right?
Yes.
"So although it's a large property, the lottery area total is directly impacted by the abutting angled streets, right?
Yes.
Yes. "With respect to the project scope, your plans call for removing the one-story portion of the existing building?
Yes.
"And again, to the best of your knowledge, that existing building formerly operated with a 7-Eleven convenience store, is that right?
Yes, correct.
"The building change allows you to actually increase the width of the vehicle drive aisles "and provide six onsite parking spaces for customers who want to park and, again, go into the store?
Yes.
"Now, in terms of site access, primary vehicle access to the gas station would come from two driveways proposed "on West Homer Street on the south side of the lot, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
"And those driveways will replace a 95-foot-wide depressed curb "that currently spans almost the entire width of the lot along its Homer frontage, is that right?
Yes, that is right.
"And again, Homer is, makes the most sense for the primary access point, because it's the widest part of the triangle. It's the base of the triangle for this property.
Yes, that is true.
"And again, at over 100 feet, that width dimension can support two proposed driveways. "And again, from a practical standpoint, that's where primary access was designed to come from.
Yes, that is true.
"Now, based on our ongoing review with DPD and CDOT, we know that Ashland Avenue "is probably the busiest abutting street, "and for that reason, we're not proposing any ingress or egress points "on the Ashland Avenue side of our lot, is that right?
Yes, that is right.
"And separate from Ashland, the existing parking area on the north side of the lot, "north of the building, will be accessed via the existing driveway to and from North Elston Avenue.
Yes.
"Again, we're proposing to modify that driveway to be right-in, right-out, correct?
Correct.
"Because today, it's both left and right in and out, correct?
Yes.
"And that arguably would be an improvement on that condition, is that right?
Yeah.
"Now, the secondary point of ingress and egress to the gas station will come from a proposed driveway "on Elston Avenue south of the building, is that right?
Yes.
"And that drive was also modified to become right-in, right-out, correct?
Yes, that is true.
"And again, restricting the drives on Elston to right-in and right-out was specifically done "to direct traffic away from the signalized intersection at Armitage and Elston, is that right?
Yes, that is true.
"And Eric, you believe the proposed site design, its ingress and egress, "and the onsite vehicle circulation plan meet code and will all function in a safe and efficient manner, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Eric, is it also your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
"And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
"Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, my third witness is Mr. Terrence O'Brien.
Great, thanks, Counselor. And we have Mr. O'Brien previously sworn, and we've acknowledged his expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Terry, again, you, the scope of your assignment in this case was to determine "whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
That is correct.
"You were also asked to provide an opinion regarding the lot area variation required to establish the gas station use, is that right?
Yes, sir.
"You physically inspected the subject property and the surrounding area?
Twice, that's correct.
"And you prepared a written zoning analysis report summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case, is that right?
Yes, sir.
"Briefly, though, Terry, is it your professional opinion "that the proposed gas station would actually be consistent and compatible with the surrounding land uses?
Yes, and if I could, I'd like to just emphasize a few very important points. "One, the subject property is owned, M3-3, which is heavy industry district. In fact, it's the most intense zoning district within- it's the most intense zoning district within the city of Chicago. And I'd like to just mention a few of the uses which are currently allowed under this zoning classification, which includes building material sales, contractor and construction storage yards, taverns, heavy equipment sales and rentals, motor vehicle repair shops, vehicle storage and towing, boat storage, intensive manufacturing, freight terminals, outdoor storage of raw materials, plus there are several other uses allowed which are equally intense as that noted herein. I'd also, also point out, I believe car washes are of it, are an allowed use.
Correct. And that was one thing I wanted to make sure the record was clear on. Uh, both freight and car washes are allowed uses without a special use in M three dash three zoning. Is that right?
That is correct.
Um, Terry, based on that information, based on the neighboring land uses and the condition of the existing property, do you believe the proposed special use meets all of the approval criteria?
Yes, and I would also point out the fact that the subject property really what is called an island, in my opinion. Otherwise, it's surrounded on all sides by public thoroughfares. With the exposure the subject has to these various public thoroughfares, it lends itself very much to some type of use which could attract the uses along the public thoroughfare, the cars, vehicles, automobiles and so forth. And a perfect example of this would be something such as a car wash, an automobile service station, or the possibility of some type of fast food drive through with a drive through component restaurant to take advantage of the exposure the subject has to these four public thoroughfares.
And Terry, um, with respect to the subject lots atypical shape, you believe that that obviously presents a real hardship that necessitates the a lot area variation being sought as well. Is that right?
That is correct. Also, I would point out that it's not unusual if one was to look throughout the city of Chicago to find there are numerous instances where automobile service stations are located on less than twenty thousand square foot sites. I have knowledge of several within the general vicinity of the subject. I'd be glad to read them into the record if the, uh, board so decides they wish to hear them.
Terry, on that point, is it your understanding that a gas station actually operated just kitty corner from the subject site, um, at the intersection of, uh, Cortland and Elston?
Yes, at one time there was a service station which is now closed.
Great. Um, Terry, uh, again, it's your understanding that my office had submitted a copy of your written report to the board with our findings of fact. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements, uh, findings and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you very much, Terry. Um, my last, uh, witness, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Michael Worthman.
Okay, great. Michael, will you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Michael Worthman, W E R T H M A N N, offices at ninety five seventy five West Higgins Road in Rosemont.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Michael, you're a professional engineer specializing in traffic, transportation and parking evaluations and consultations. Is that right?
Uh, yes, correct.
And you've testified in that professional capacity many times before this board, right?
Correct.
The scope of your assignment in this case was to provide a professional opinion um, and design direction as to the safest option for the proposed gas station at the subject property.
Uh, correct. We, uh, performed a, uh, traffic impact study, uh, regarding the proposed use and its impact on the roadway, street system.
And Michael, um, is it your professional opinion that the proposed site plan with the revised curb cuts and the right in, right out direction on, uh, Elston Avenue in particular, provides the safest and most efficient design for the site?
Uh, yeah, we believe that the site has been designed to provide efficient and orderly access to the site, uh, which will enhance the pedestrian circulation in the area. Uh, this is due to several reasons, which you've heard. Primary access will be off of Homer, uh, which is a local, very low volume road. Uh, currently it's a ninety five foot access drive, no sidewalk. Um, we are going to put sidewalk in. We're going to reduce that access drive to two, uh, twenty five foot access drives uh, with appropriate, uh, sidewalk and pedestrian facilities. Uh, the full access drive to the north of the building will be converted to a right in, right out. And the access drive on Elston will also be a right in, right out, uh, minimizing the turning conflicts at both of these intersections.
And Michael, based on those, um, site details, is it your professional opinion that the proposed, uh, the proposed special use was designed specifically, um, to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Uh, yeah, everything we're doing here is to, uh, provide, uh, the most comfortable uh, pedestrian, uh, circulation that we can.
Michael, is it your professional opinion that the proposal would actually call for an improvement upon the existing conditions surrounding the subject property?
Uh, it would along, uh, Homer Street for sure. Yes.
And, um, do you believe, uh, that the gas station on its own will create or generate an undue amount of new traffic?
Uh, no, and that is due primarily to the fact that gas stations generate the majority of their traffic from the traffic already on the roadway system. It's that traffic that's passing the gas station. Holds in, fills up and then goes back on their way. That's why most gas stations are located along higher volume, uh, roadways like you see here. A second is the fact that, uh, this gas station is very similar in size and scope uh, to the previous gas station that was located just south of here that you've heard about, uh, at the intersection of, uh, Elston and Cortland. So we're almost replacing a gas station that had been there for years and years.
And Michael, you have prepared a written report, again, um, summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case?
I have.
It's your understanding that my office had filed a, uh, copy of that written report with the board?
It's my understanding, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in that written report?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Um, you know what, Chairman, before I conclude the applicant's case in chief, if I could please call Mr. Terry O'Brien back, I have two quick follow up questions and then we'll conclude our case.
Yep, that's fine, Counselor.
Terry, um, in talking about the surrounding land uses, is it, is it true that most of the surrounding land uses are either commercial or manufacturing in nature?
Yes, uh, probably the best way to describe it is located immediately south of the subject, which is Homer Street. And I believe then there's a public storage facility. Then when you go west or east side of Elston, it's primarily industrial, commercial buildings. And then the w- west side, which is Ashland Avenue, then you have, uh, train tracks for the Metro train station. And the, so it's, the area is primarily heavy manufacturing, industrial and some commercial, if you wish to call, public storage, a, uh, commercial type facility.
With respect to the nearest residential districts, is it true that those districts are actually west of the Kennedy Expressway?
They would be west of the Kennedy Expressway, yes, or substantially east, uh, of the river and so on and so forth. This is a long, it's a long distance. There's no, uh, residential immediate vicinity.
Right. So our segment of manufacturing and commercial uses is basically, um, in between the river to the west, I'm sorry, the river to the east and the Kennedy Expressway, um, to the west. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say. And the best way to describe it is all the properties located north and south of the subject are zoned M three dash three, located to the west of the subject is M three dash three. To the east of the subject is M three dash three. It's all heavy manufacturing, which the subject is currently zoned.
And again, for those reasons, you believe that the proposed gas station is, in fact, a consistent and compatible use with the surrounding land uses?
That, and also the fact that it's an island surrounded in four sides by public thoroughfares, which lends itself to taking advantage of those public thoroughfares, a use that would, uh, complement those public thoroughfares, namely a gas station.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. Again, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our proposal.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Um, any questions from the board? And then, um, then we'll turn it over, um, to, to the objectors.
Just a, 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 a quick clarifying question. Um, if I'm, if I'm understanding this right, the, uh, the curb cuts, the entrances and exits, uh, for the vehicles are only on Homer and Elston?
Correct. So the, today, um, Commissioner, I just want to be able to give you a, an existing condition and then what we're proposing. Today, the ninety five feet width of Homer is a depressed curb. So any, there's no dedicated driveway or curb cut providing access to the property. Our plan would improve that condition by having two dedicated driveways separated with fencing and landscaping, um, and actually some, some sidewalk improvements on that side of the lot. We're not proposing any, there is no existing curb cut and we're not proposing any new curb cut from the Armitage Street side of the property. We agree with the department that that is probably the busiest street. And for that reason, there's no access that we would propose from that side. And then if we go to the east side of the property, um, along Elston Avenue, there's an existing curb cut located on the north side of the lot that provides, uh, ingress and egress to the parking area, again, north of the building. We'll modify that to make that right in, right out. Today, it's left in, left out, or it, it allows, there's no restriction. It's an in and out drive. The only new or proposed curb cut would be the one shown south of the building that would allow, uh, again, right in, right out traffic back onto Elston. And that's reflected in the site plan that I believe staff's trying to get to. The view you're looking at right now is again approximately where the new curb cut would be located right in, right out to southbound Elston traffic.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions from the board at this time? Okay, let's move it over to DPD C dot and Department or in Alderman Wagaspack's office. Um, so I'll start unless he says otherwise, I'll start with the zoning administrator, Patrick Murphy. Patrick, so if you're on, um, just state your name and let us know who you are and I'll swear you in.
Uh, yes, sir. Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Patrick Murphy, uh, zoning administrator for the city of Chicago in the Department of Planning and Development.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, go right ahead.
So I, I guess I'd like to start out by, well, with a couple of things. One is to just reiterate that the letter, the recommendation or the, the lack of support from the department that you read into the record earlier states generally all of the reasons as to why we collectively do not support this proposal. But I would also like to respond to a few of the items that were brought up by various expert witnesses uh, testifying in support of the project, if I may. Okay, so to start with, uh, and I will let Bill Higgins from C dot get a little more into these specifics, but the city, uh, entered into a long term and very, uh, collaborative strategy to revise or propose to revise the layout of Elston Avenue. That was in response to two plan developments that are proposed within a very close proximity to this site, both to the east and the southeast. The re, the realignment of Elston Avenue is a long term goal of the city, both to affect improvement of traffic circulation in the area as well as the redevelopment of these two planned development area sites. And about those two sites, plus all of the areas to the south and east, this particular location is within North Branch Industrial Corridor. And the city of Chicago and our department went through, again, a very specific process to look at all of the land uses and zoning designations within this industrial corridor. This parcel and the parcels to the east lie within Subarea A. And all of those parcels were specifically reduced from a PMD zoning designation to their corresponding manufacturing district with the anticipation that they would all then transition over time to a business and commercial zoning. So therefore, all of the intensive manufacturing uses that were listed, some of which, uh, do exist, but most of which are no longer present in this area of the city would no longer be allowed to be established. Furthermore, of some of the other uses that could be provided, those require at the very least a special use, if not in some cases being prohibited in some of the zoning districts that are anticipated to remain. And then finally, just in regards to the impact of the traffic, both from this site and as it corresponds to the realignment of Elston Avenue, also included in discussions related to those two planned developments that make up Lincoln Yards and the overall revisions to the North Branch Corridor, to the industrial corridor, were very specific discussions about the relocation of the Metro Station, which is located approximately to the south and west of this parcel. So all of those combined improvements were designed by the city in conjunction with the Department of Planning and Development, I'm sorry, with Department of C dot, to provide for better access for non-industrial purposes in this current industrial corridor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Patrick. Um, and now, uh, we're going to move to Bill Higgins with C dot. Um, Bill, so if you're on, can you please state your name and address? Or rather, name and, name and role is what would be helpful.
No problem. Uh, William Higgins, uh, project manager of Chicago Department of Transportation's Plan Review Section.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do. Um, just to respond to a few of the the comments made, um, yes, Homer is a lower volume street as, uh, Mr. Worthman had testified and it is in current condition, is not up to standards. However, the driveways on Elston required to, uh, uh, facilitate a truck movement through the lot, um, present some problems. The, the truck turn uh, exhibit that was provided, uh, clearly shows the truck necessary to, uh, come into, encroach upon the, the oncoming lane, uh, both on Homer and on Elston, creating a difficulty, uh, for traffic there. As Mr. Worthman said, gas stations generally don't generate a lot of additional traffic in the area. However, um, that's in terms of number of cars going down the road. The, those cars are then turning into this lot and those turn movements slow traffic and create more, um, congestion. Um, as noted, the, uh, intersections around this, uh, site in particular are some of the highest crash points in the city. We've, uh, I pulled one study that from twenty eleven to twenty fifteen, there was five hundred and seventy nine motor vehicle crashes and in these intersections alone, um, as, as well as several, uh, pedestrian and bicycle crashes as well. Um, we also have concerns with the north, uh, driveway, which while there's an existing parking lot and driveway there, the onsite requirements of, of current code, uh, can constrict that parking lot further. And that driveway is so close to the intersection of Armitage and Elston, that while they are proposing signage to restrict to right turns, there's no physical barrier to left turns and a left turn would be very dangerous at that point. Believe that covers everything that I needed. If there was any other questions for me.
Yeah, could you give just a little bit more of, um, of a background in, in your experience? Yeah, I, I know you said your role and we're, we're familiar with C dot, but if we could get depth of your experience on why, um, you know, you're an expert on this, how many items you work at this a year, um, just so that the board has an understanding.
Sure. Um, I'm an urban planner by training. I've been working with the Chicago Department of Transportation for, um, uh, eight years now and we have, uh, reviewed dozens upon dozens of, uh, zoning, uh, zoning cases as well as planned developments, um, in that time. Uh, prior to my time with the city, I also worked in transportation within the planning field as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, let's go to, to Paul Sajovic with Alderman Wagaspack's office. Paul, are you still on?
I am.
Great. Can you state your name and your role as well?
Yes, my name's Paul Sajavec. I'm Chief of Staff to Alderman Scott Wagaspack Thirty Second Ward.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay, great. So, um, you know, we're, we're very concerned, the Alderman is very concerned about this, um, proposed use. proposed use of this particular location, and it really comes down to, for us, the extreme close proximity to one of the most congested, most difficult intersections in the city. And that is evidenced by a great deal of effort recently to determine ways to try and correct that. From a safety standpoint and from a traffic congestion standpoint, there's been allocations of TIF dollars to study different possibilities. There's been talk over the years of potentially building overpasses, which is not something that Alderman Waggaspack is particularly fond of with our experience at Western Avenue. And so because of all the challenges associated with this intersection, it's our very strong belief that putting what is essentially the highest trip generating use that you could come up with directly south of this congested intersection would be a major, major policy mistake on behalf of the city. The real emphasis from our standpoint are safety and congestion, and that's because that's what we hear from our constituents on a daily basis. Phone calls, emails, you know, continuous complaints about, you know, why doesn't this function better? Why was such and such use allowed to be so close to XYZ intersection? This intersection right now, you know, we did a lot of work on Damon, Elston, Fullerton, and greatly improved the operations there. But this intersection now, you know, is sort of at the top of CDOT's list. And, you know, despite all of our efforts at Damon, Elston, Fullerton, there still are many, many challenges there to this day as well. And so, you know, we look at it in terms of, you've got Ashland with 30,400 cars a day, Elston with 13,600 cars a day, and Armitage with 15,400 cars a day. That's 59,400 cars every single day moving through this intersection. So, you know, we're kind of like, we feel like our role is to represent all those drivers, all that lost time, all those potential crashes for those people moving through the intersection. And I want to piggyback on a couple of the other points that both Bill and Patrick made, you know, that it is true that a gas station, convenience store is not going to attract a lot of people from, you know, outside the area who are traveling, you know, with a purpose to get to this particular location. So it doesn't increase the volume of traffic on the streets. But in the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Tables, a gas station with a convenience store is at the very, very top in terms of the number of trips that it is expected and anticipated to generate. So for the hundreds of different categories that they have in their model, this is at the very, very top. And so with all of those trips generated and all of those cars churning into and out of the lot, and as, you know, Bill mentioned, it's one thing to say, well, we're going to have a right in and right out. It's another thing to enforce it. So we know from experience that we get lots and lots of calls from constituents complaining that people are turning left where they're not supposed to, and that's stopping traffic and slowing traffic down. And there's really no way to enforce that kind of restriction. And so for all those reasons, we feel very, very strongly that, you know, putting the highest trip generating use you can find right on top of a tremendously problematic intersection as it is, is, you know, just would be a real policy failure on behalf of the city. And the whole idea, the whole reason that we're here, right, is because this kind of use requires a special use from the city. So we're supposed to take a look at it on a case-by-case basis. If what is presented here doesn't, you know, throw up red flags, I guess our question would be what kind of use would? You know, if having such a high trip generating use right on top of such a problematic intersection is okay, then, you know, where would it not be okay? So for all of those reasons, we very respectfully ask for the board to join the city's departments in, you know, recommending against this particular plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Paul. And can you just remind us all, I know you gave a little bit about your, what you do for the Alderman, how long you've been in that office, and maybe on the ground, how familiar you are with this intersection?
Sure. So I've been with the Alderman since day one, so that goes back to 2007 now. And I joined the team there because of my background in planning and urban development. We have devoted a great deal of time and effort over the years to these kinds of issues because we try to be very responsive to constituent concerns. And when you sit in the Alderman's office, those are the calls you get, you know, day in and day out, people stuck in traffic congestion, people stuck behind an accident. And so, you know, whereas it wouldn't necessarily have been sort of the top thing that you'd think going in that an Alderman would deal with, because of the sort of high volume of calls and complaints that we get, we've tried to, you know, direct a lot of our efforts and attention, both learning about the dynamics of these issues and also, you know, trying to figure out how to work with the city departments to make sure that, you know, that those 59,400 drivers, that their concerns are being incorporated into these decisions. And so we learned a tremendous amount from our work on the Damon, Elston, Fullerton intersection, which, you know, kind of, I think, before its reconfiguration, was kind of at the top of CDOT's list of problematic intersections. Still many challenges there despite all the work and improvements. And then I think we also learned a lot from the Western Avenue overpass, taking that down and bringing everything back to an at-grade condition. And so we feel like the combination of all those efforts, you know, puts us in at least a decent position to be able to try to make sure that, you know, these community, you know, concerns are incorporated into these types of decisions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board for any of Patrick, William, or Paul?
This is Commissioner McDonald. I did have a couple of questions. I think my first one is for Mr. Murphy. You mentioned that you had been working on a realignment of Elston, and that this type of site would, I believe you said, be inconsistent with that work as well as work to potentially relocate the Metro Station. Could you just explain that a little bit more, how these projects would be inconsistent?
Sure. So I don't want to overspeak about Elston or the Metro. So first of all, the work that we were most involved in was the reclassification and the analysis of the industrial corridors. And so that speaks directly to the land uses that are, oh, I'm sorry, for the record, my name is Patrick Murphy. That speaks directly to the land uses that were referenced in the testimony as well as an eventual either prohibition or, like I was saying, requirement of a special use to reestablish some of these intensive uses that were referenced to the east and south. Secondarily, and as a part of those efforts in the industrial corridor, we specifically with CDOT looked at realignment of Elston Avenue, both southeast of this location and as it travels north up through its intersection with Armitage and Ashland. I will let Bill speak to exactly how it impacts this specific site, but the concern was that we already have a significant traffic situation on multiple streets in this area. And as development is anticipated to increase, as we specifically planned for it to increase, that will only become more burdensome. We have been, we worked extensively through this process with the CTA to look at bus activity, additional bridges, and other ways to improve connectivity across the river, where formerly it was heavily industrial with a significant lack of a street grid. And so for all of those reasons, we don't support this type of traffic generating proposal. But then secondarily, as it relates to the Metro, we did not include plans to realign or relocate the Metro Station as a part of this, these last two planned developments related to Lincoln Yards. But it was very much part of our discussions with the RTA, and it is very much in line with what both the city and the RTA would like to see for that very highly trafficked station at Clyburn. Where exactly that would move to, that has not been decided, nor have anything related to funding or timing been secured.
Thank you. And my next question might also be for Mr. Higgins, but just to follow up on what you said. Is it your statement, is your testimony that the proposed development or the ongoing development at Lincoln Yards would increase the traffic at this location? Mr. Murphy, you're muted.
Sorry about that. It very likely would increase, but it would most definitely alter the traffic patterns that existed when this was an industrial area.
Mr. Higgins, were you going to add something?
Yeah, I can add to that. It absolutely will impact the traffic in the area. The PD required the Elston realignment to be addressed before the north phase can really move forward in the Lincoln Yard development. And to that point, Elston would be shifted south of Cortland to expand this intersection similar to the way that we did the Fullerton, Damon, and Elston intersection, where we rerouted the roadway to spread out the intersection. Because right now, Ashland, Elston, and Armitage all come together in a very close proximity. Having a six-legged intersection that's offset the way this is is particularly difficult to, on traffic in general, as is the current condition. Another point on Lincoln Yards too is that it would also generate more traffic to the foot traffic to the Metro Station across this area down Portland.
And then just, thank you very much. It's very helpful. One more question too. Where the, this truck turn plan that's up, where the truck starts on this plan, that is on Ashland Avenue near where the overpass is there, right? And that overpass sort of partially obstructs Ashland in that region as well? Is that correct?
Yes, the Armitage, there is the viaduct at Armitage and Ashland there, and that truck would be coming right out of that viaduct into making this turn movement into Homer.
And is there anything about this traffic pattern that CDOT, in particular, other than blocking traffic as the truck enters and exits, making that kind of turn? Is there anything in particular CDOT's concerned with about that?
Certainly, there's, given the high volume of traffic on Ashland, it often backs up past Homer at this intersection. Having a truck waiting to make that left turn with no signal and no stop sign could then gridlock the intersection with traffic backing up behind it. So it creates a number of different problems.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez, I have a couple, just some questions for Mr. Murphy, if we still have them. Mr. Murphy, are you still?
Yes, yes, I'm still there. Yes, yes.
Okay, great. You've talked a little bit about the future and the congestion for the future and perhaps dangers in the future, but I'm more interested in the current safety issues that may exist in this intersection. And Mr. Higgins and Mr. Sajovic have talked about that. Can you talk about the current, you know, traffic scenarios that exist at this intersection as regards to safety?
I mean, I would have to defer to CDOT and Mr. Higgins for specifics about the traffic situation or exactly how it constitutes from a technical standpoint, what the dangers are.
All right, well then, Mr. Higgins, can you expand upon the current situation regarding traffic in this area as regards to safety?
Yes. Both, well, all three roads, Ashland, Elston, and Armitage have high volumes. You have viaducts on Ashland and on Armitage, and further north on Elston, and those viaducts constrict the lane width. And the offset six-way intersection we have here has two different sets of traffic signals within a few hundred feet of each other. This really exacerbates traffic. Cars end up getting caught in the middle of the intersection or in this small triangular portion of public way just north of Armitage here. We often get backed up traffic. Because of the confusion this creates, we see the higher number of traffic accidents and crashes that I mentioned earlier. Additionally, Elston has bike lanes on it. It's a very well-used spoke bike route, diagonal street bike route. So we do have a lot of complaints and difficulty from cyclists trying to cross this very large expansive intersection from north of, north of the viaduct on Elston through these two intersections, south to Elston here. And at this point, it's still a very wide roadway with a lot of traffic coming in and dealing with all the confusion that I mentioned.
Is it, is it your opinion based upon your background and experience and looking at this issue that the addition of a gas station at this area would make the traffic in regards to safety more dangerous?
It would, particularly with the driveways on the Elston side of the proposal. Those turn movements, even if they follow the right turn only signage and go out to the right, it still would have difficulty finding gaps in traffic. In those situations, cars and drivers tend to become more aggressive, try to pull into a small gap in traffic, and that's where the problems arise.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions from the board for the objectors? Okay, so let's bring it back to the applicant then. And going through our objection-style process, Nick, you've got the opportunity to do rebuttal testimony. The board also might have additional questions for your side, but then we'll close it out.
What I'd like to do is if I can call, recall Zafar Hussain for a few quick questions. And then Chairman, what I'd like to do is just provide a counterpoint to the points that were, some of the points that were raised by the objectors. If there are further questions, we'll answer them as they come.
Yep, of course. And you can also ask any questions of the city witnesses.
Okay. Zafar, are you still with us?
Yes.
Zafar, we heard a lot about the impact of the gas, the fueling truck and its access to the property in the objection. Did you hear that testimony?
Yes.
On average, how many trips, how many deliveries of gas are made during a typical week at a gas station of this size?
I would say about one to two per week.
Assuming it's two, the larger of the numbers, we're talking about two, a total of eight left turns over the course of a month to access the property and provide fuel. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Chairman.
We can also control the times that they come for delivery.
Okay, so that's an important point. So Zafar, I'm sorry I skipped over that. In terms of scheduling those deliveries, you can do those early in the morning or later in the evening so as to avoid times that we know there's a lot of congestion specifically on Ashland Avenue. Is that right?
Correct. A lot of the downtown locations actually do like night deliveries sometimes or super early in the morning, like five. I mean, they can, we can change the timings of the deliveries.
I mean, we could better control to reduce the potential impact for, again, creating a traffic condition that causes a backup or any other issues at the property. Is that right?
That's 100%.
All right. Thank you, Zafar. I appreciate that. Chairman, I'm going to do my best to just go through a handful of points that were raised. And then, again, if there are follow-up questions, I want to make sure all of our witnesses are still available to answer questions if there are any. all of our witnesses are still available to answer questions if there are any. Starting with Commissioner Murphy. Again, his point about a long-term goal and future plans based on future developments is well taken. But today, the property is owned M3-3. That M3-3 zoning is surrounded by other M3-3 zoning districts. The M3-3 zoning district is the most intense manufacturing use outside of the PMDs. It allows for the car wash that we talked about, and I will ask Mr. Higgins shortly, but how is that? How is that in and out traffic any different? And that's an allowed use under the code today. Secondly, we talked about other permitted uses in the M3-3 district. Freight movement is one of them. This property is properly zoned for warehousing, wholesaling and freight movements, specifically including freight terminals and the outdoor storage of raw materials as a principal use. That's what, excuse me, that's what the current M3-3 zoning allows. We think that that's that's not a use that we want to establish. The gas station use is one that does yes, requires a special use. Commissioner Murphy is 100% right. That's why we're here. But to say that this use would be the most impactful use, I don't think that's a fair statement to make. Mr. Sadrick testified that there's 59,000 vehicles on these three roads on a daily basis. He's exactly right, and that's why providing of auto service type use at the property makes the most sense. All three witnesses said for the city, all three witnesses said, as well as our own witness testifying, Mr. Worthman, that we're not going to add traffic because people aren't going to come here out of destination. We're picking up hopefully many of those 59,000 cars to be able to provide fuel services on the streets that they're currently driving. With respect to Mr. Higgins, again, these are, we talked about the the truck movements and the traffic generations and some of the proposed changes based on the Lincoln Yards development. But again, we're talking about future uses. Right now, I've said it 10 times, we have M3-3 zoning, the most intense manufacturing zoning that the city acknowledges or the city code allows. And we're trying to permit a use that would otherwise fit within it, and it's consistent and compatible with the surrounding land uses. Mr. O'Brien testified, there was already a gas station kitty corner from the subject site. All of the focus of the concern right now is at the three-street intersection north of the subject property. Everything we've done over the last four months is to direct our traffic away from that intersection. To say that because there may be a better plan 10 or 20 years from now, that's not grounds for denying a special use today. Mr. Chairman, again, all of our witnesses are available to testify if or available to answer questions if you have any. The applicant rests its case.
Okay, questions from the board?
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. I have a couple. The gas, the previous gas station you all keep referring to, how long has that been closed?
I believe it's a little bit over a year, possibly two years, but it's it's not certainly not there today. The point is, there was that type of use kitty corner from our property.
Yep, and then I guess this would be for the traffic. You're a traffic expert. I hear you saying that traffic count won't increase, but can you address traffic flow and the impacts of this proposed use on traffic flow?
Yeah, Michael Worthman. I think your question was, I'm sorry, you broke up the impact on traffic flow.
Yeah, not traffic count. I I can buy the case that it won't increase significantly, but yeah, traffic flow.
Yeah, I think the main thing is that, you know, our slower turning movements are going to be off, or most of them are going to be off of Homer Avenue, which is a lower volume road. Elston carries the lower volume of traffic of the three streets. So that will help with the flow. Anytime you have a development, you're going to have traffic turning in and out, which introduces turning conflicts. However, we tried to put all of our access drives on those lower volume roads to minimize our impact. We restricted the access drives on Elston to right in, right out only, so you eliminate those left turns. We do not have any physical barriers. Some people do make left turns even though it's restricted. We like to call it the 90-10 rule, where 90, maybe 85% of the people follow the road, but there are 10%, 15% who won't. One thing I want to indicate on the truck movement. As it comes out of Elston, it can make the left turn out if it wants to go north. CDOT asked us to show the movement going back south because in the future Elston is going to be cul-de-sac or end at Armitage Avenue. So we just wanted to show down the road, no pun intended, that their truck could get out by making that U-turn out.
And sorry, I have one more question. I guess either for Nick or the owner. So that that parking lot at the north part of the site is just for the convenience store essentially?
Well, yeah, we envisioned it as either for employee parking or for customers who don't need to go in for guests and just want to go in for, you know, a gallon of milk. So it would be kind of offset accessory parking for for the convenience store or again for employees of the building.
And and I think, I'm sorry, I said a couple, and I'm probably on question four now. So I think DPD referenced this in their their recommendation or non-recommendation. So the area of the site that's actually used as a gas station, what is? What is that square footage compared to the overall?
Commissioner, I'd have to refer to the survey. That's not how, not only is that not how the code is applied, proof of that is the zoning denial letter specified that we are seeking a lot minimum lottery reduction because the entire facility will operate on the property. So I appreciate, I appreciate the question. I don't have the geometry in front of me.
I understand that, Nick, but typically, right, a gas station has like you don't have the convenience store blocking off the rest of the site. So I understand that, but this is unique in that aspect. So that's I'm trying to understand that. Thanks.
Eric?
I have been listening, but I if you could.
If you, Eric, if if you could just do me a quick favor, can you give me an estimate of the lottery total? If you're referring to the survey for lots three, four and five. Those are the lots, the northern lots on the north side of the building. I don't have that dimension or I don't have an area total broken out for that. And Commissioner Saul asked how much, you know, how much of the site would remain? The building down to the the gas station side approximately?
Let me open up the AutoCAD. I'll be with you in a moment. I'll have to calculate it. So as I open up the CAD, the the area of the the north parking lot area, north of the building, you would like as compared to?
Is that what? If you can give us the dimension, the the area.
Sorry, you can give me the north because the total is in the on the agenda. So yes, the north is sufficient. Thanks.
The area of the north of the building, and I'll have that in just a moment here.
And Nancy, I see your hand raised. I'll confirm after this.
The area is 4,012 square feet north of the building, the parking lot north of the building inside the property lines.
Thank you.
And Nancy, go right ahead.
Yeah, I I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Saul's question. Since it was DPD that did that calculation, what we looked at is the area of the actual parking lot that is associated with the gas station use. And again, just the portion of the building, so the southern half of that building that's associated with the gas station use because that kind of has a dual use. I understand what Attorney Nick Fittig is saying that, you know, the the code technically looks at it as a whole zoning lot, but the whole zoning lot is also well below the 20,000 square feet. It's only 16,000 square feet. The reason why we we specifically sectioned out and highlighted that there is a smaller portion. It's because of the site, the site is so segmented. So when you're looking at the usual useful portion of it, that's just dedicated to the gas station use, it's just that smaller portion at 11,130 that we calculated in the memo.
Great, thanks, Nancy. Other questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, if you could go ahead and close out, I think we've got a lot of information here.
Chairman, I think my rebuttal said most of what I wanted to say and establish for the record. The subject property formerly functioned with a 7-Eleven convenience store. We're proposing to adapt and reuse the site and establish a gas station. The variation is directly, the variation to lot area is directly related to the shape of the lot, the triangular shape, which we all admit is irregular. The special use to establish the gas station is what the current zoning code and the current zoning map require for the property. It's M3-3 zoning surrounded by M3-3 zoning. Yes, there are traffic conditions that are impactful to the north of us. We're not ignoring that. We redesigned our plan and tried to work with the city to come up with the safest solution to improve the existing conditions. Everybody, I believe, almost all of the witnesses that testified on behalf of the city and behalf of the applicant acknowledged that the current conditions of Homer Street are poor. Our program would improve the existing conditions. Is it an ideal use? Is it a park? No. But a gas station in an M3-3 zone is an appropriate use, and that's why we're proposing it. Again, the changes that we made over the course of the last four months were directly intended to reduce any type of impact and direct our traffic away from the problem intersection. No matter what use goes here, it's still going to be located just south of a very problematic intersection. The city has an opportunity now based on a special use, based on conditions that we're open to agreeing to to allow or to establish a use that could control the traffic in a better scenario. Chairman, I really do appreciate the time. If, again, any other questions, otherwise, again, the applicant would rest its case.
Great, thanks so much. Yep, we'll take this under consideration and thank you, everyone who came on for this call and the applicant. We appreciate all of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go to long strings cases. It starts with in no particular order, it's 77-22-Z the 504-21-Z 505-21-D, 506-21-D, 507-21-D, 508-21-S, 509-21-S, 510-21-Z and 511-21-Z. So if anyone is on to object to those matters, please raise your hand or press star nine, and we will get you promoted and you'll be able to speak. I'm going to go ahead and read the recommendations for the two special uses. And Counselor, let's make sure that everyone is on. So I see one hand raised. Kenneth, I don't believe it's for this matter, but if you could unmute yourself and confirm.
You're correct. I just wanted to make sure I didn't. You went kind of quick with some of those numbers. I do have our my case number or what whatnot, and I don't think I heard it. And you just kind of confirmed by your reaction that we're not covering that.
Definitely. No, you're going to be last. Best for last. But we, thanks for hanging on, and we'll definitely get to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to read the department's recommendations. For 508-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish accessory off-site parking lot for an existing school located at 1700 West 83rd Street, which is not more than 600 feet from the use served for proposed two-story addition to an existing three-story school, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Longdale Educational and Regional Network, and the development is consistent with the design and layout, plans and drawings dated December 9, 2021, with site and landscape plans and details dated February 18, 2022, prepared by Moody Nolan. Okay, and for 509-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a non-accessory parking lot with 24 parking stalls, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Longdale Educational and Regional Network, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December 9, 2021, with site and landscape plans and details dated February 18, 2022, prepared by Moody Nolan. With that, Counselor Scott Borstein, feel free to start.
Great. Can everybody hear me? Terrific. Again, Scott Borstein with the Law Office and Neil and Leroy here on behalf of the Longdale Charter Network, which is, the acronym is LEARN, which maybe more people are familiar with that. So here on behalf of LEARN, and I'm joined by, I've got, we've got multiple people that are part of this project because of the various requests that we're making, but from LEARN, we have the principal of the school, Mr. John Bennett. We also have his colleague, Sheevan Gordon, who's here as well, I think. Our architecture team is Moody Nolan. The principal architect is Renal Mitchell, but he might, I'm not sure if he's going to be available because he was boarding a plane. But we have two other architects from his firm, Drew Daring and Rachel Cooper, who are here to testify. We have Kathy Dart, our appraiser, who is here because again, the parking lot is a special use requirement, and so we wanted to obviously get in the appropriate report and testimony relating to that. And then we also have Michael Worthman, I think he's still here, who is our traffic consultant. And so I guess, let me just briefly, so this is a very successful charter school that because of its success is in the position of needing to expand. So it's a great thing for the area. And but you can see that it's a very small site for a school. And so as a result, you know, the, all of the variations we're asking for on the school portion of the site are really the hardship results from the fact that we just don't have a lot of room, right? We've got an existing building. We're trying to add to it, but we have very, a very limited campus space. And then as it relates to the parking lot, again, you heard we're asking for a special use. But in addition, we're asking for a waiver of our front yard landscape requirement for that, again, because we want to maintain the existing parking that we have and not have to lose additional parking, which is like so many other places in the city, a very precious commodity. And and so we're trying to retain all of the parking that we can. Just just one point of clarification, so it's clear to the board. We had originally applied for a variation for the parking lot, and that was application 51021Z. That that case or that application was withdrawn and replaced with this one that's now referred to as 7722Z. So just want to make sure that everybody's got that clarification. And so with that introduction, Mr. Chairman, if, and again, I, there's no objectors. Is that my understanding?
Yep, none have, none have raised their hands, but again, announcement, if there are any here, just raise your hand and we'll get you promoted.
Okay, well, that's good because we want to try to, I know it's late in the day here. We want to try to go quickly. I will just add too, and we have Adrian Leonard, if she needs to testify here. who was very helpful in terms of our whole community outreach for this process. This has been a very highly notified process for the community. We, in addition to our notice letter, we sent out a flyer to everybody within, it was even a bigger radius than 250 feet. We sent out a flyer explaining what we were doing. That was before our original hearing that was scheduled in December. And then when that one didn't go, we sent out another flyer, again, advising everybody in a, in a, in a large radius around the school of the hearing that's coming up. So, and, and, and there has been a lot of interaction with the community. And I don't know if they're still available at this late hour, but we did have a number of witnesses who were prepared to testify in support of the project. So I guess depending on, on, you know, when we finish here, we can ask and see if they're available, if you want to hear their support. But, so with that, I would just ask, Mr. Chairman, if you would, if you would swear in our witnesses, and we can ask them quickly about their opinions and then try to get through this.
Let's do it. So John Bennett, could you state your name and address, please?
My name is John Bennett. My address is 8205 South Hermontus Avenue.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Renauld Mitchell, will you state your name and address as well?
I don't believe Mr. Mitchell will be making, I will be representing him for part of Moody Nolan. I am Drew Dearing.
Okay, Drew, can you state your name and address?
Yes, I am Drew Dearing, Associate Principal of Moody Nolan. Our address is 209 South LaSalle Street, Suite 810.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Kathy Dart is sworn on the record, and we have acknowledged her expertise. Same with Michael Worthman, he's been sworn in on the record. I also on my list have Sheevan Gordon. She, are you on?
Simon, I'm here.
Great. Can you state your name and address, please?
Sheevan Gordon, 5112 South Lincoln Street, Kingsdale, Illinois 60521.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. And is, is Hunter Perkins right next to you?
Right? No, so I'm Adrian Leonard, and these are some of the community ones. There we go, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's the LEARN Hunter Perkins campus.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so Adrian, though, let's get you sworn in because I have a feeling that you might want to speak at some point or answer some questions. So will you state your name and address?
Sure. Adrian Leonard, 8134 South Lafflet Street.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, I think that's everyone.
It is, it is. Thank you. So I'm just going to ask our, our technical witnesses, you know, the questions. And then, again, if the board has questions, of course, we've got all these support people to address the issues. But so we'll start off with, with John Bennett. John, and by the way, just for clarification, when we submitted our initial affidavit for LEARN, we submitted it in the name of the, the chairman of the, the whole school network. And so he was unable to make it, but, but John is the principal of the school and is very familiar, obviously, with everything that we're doing here and all of the variations and the special use requests that we've made. And so, John, I'll ask you, given all of the materials and information that we have submitted in connection with this project, including our findings of fact, Kathy Dart's report, the affidavit that we submitted, are you, are you familiar with all those materials? And if I were to ask you additional questions today, would your testimony be consistent with all of those materials, including the affidavit submitted, submitted on behalf of LEARN?
Yes, I am, and yes, it will.
Terrific. So we'll move on to Drew. Drew, again, Moody Nolan being the design architect for the project. You were very involved in designing the building, understanding the variations that were needed. And you've also reviewed the various findings of facts and the affidavit that was submitted from your firm. And if I were to ask you additional questions today, would your testimony be consistent with those findings and conclusions that were contained in those materials and the affidavit?
That is correct.
Terrific. We'll jump to Kathy Dart. Kathy, again, you, you went out to the site, you inspected, you focused largely on the special use, but your, your report also included some of the standards relating to the variations as well. So it, and obviously, you're familiar with the report that you prepared. So if I were to ask you today for additional testimony, would your statements and conclusions be consistent with the findings and conclusions that were in those materials in your affidavit and your report?
Yes, they would.
Terrific. All right. I think that's it for our, you know, that we obviously happy to go over the technical nature and what we're doing with the building itself and the school. It is a very exciting project. And as I say, we've got the witnesses here who you've sworn in to answer additional questions. If there's traffic questions and so forth, obviously, KLA, Mike Worthman's here to, to answer those. You should have a letter on file from Alderman Brookins, you know, in support of the project. And I know, as I say, you can see in the background there, there are some people here from the community. If you want to hear additional, additional testimony in support of the project.
Great, thanks, Counselor. Any questions from the board? Okay. I know we've got a lot of people here, but we've also, we've got a ton of information on this. So I really do thank everyone for their time and for, for staying late, and we'll take this under consideration.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, everyone, let's go through the 22-22-S and 23-22-S. As the counselor gets situated, I'll say if anyone's here to object on, again, 22 and 23, raise your hand, we'll get you promoted. And I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. For 22-22-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a 7,839 square foot participant sports and recreation space within an existing two-story building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Chicago Barbell Compound, LLC, DBA, Chicago Barbell Compound, and the development is consistent with the design and layout plans and drawings dated February 15, 2022. Okay, for 23-22-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a 6,039 square foot participant sports and recreation space within an existing two-story building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, CrossFit PR LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated February 15, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, can you?
Yep, we can.
Excellent. Nice sound.
You're muted.
Yeah, now you're muted. We could hear you before.
Oh, sorry about that. Is that better now?
Yep, we got you. Yep.
Okay, I don't know how much you caught, but my name is Tilar Berbarian from Thompson Coburn with offices at 55 East Monroe. I'm here this afternoon representing the applicants for the two matters you just discussed, 22 and 23, 22-S. I believe my client, who is the manager of the two entities, is online as well. Gerard Alehi, is he on? Are you on there, Gerard?
He was logged in, but he just dropped off, so he might be joining back again.
Okay, well, he'll be, he'll be on very shortly. We also have here Peter Pullo as our appraiser for both matters. Just as a little bit of explanation on this request here, the two businesses are run by two gentlemen, they're the same two gentlemen. Gerard, who is here with us this evening, is a manager of both entities and actively runs with his partner, both businesses. The businesses have been run as they are since 2013. There was a special use approved for the gyms that, that operate the same way as they did back then, but unfortunately, the applicant's business license expired, which required them to come back and reinstate the special uses. And when the special use was initially approved, it was approved for one larger space. The gyms have since broken out into two separate gym spaces, which is why we are requesting two special uses, and you're hearing these as two separate matters today. So Gerard, are you on now?
No, he has not joined back.
Oh, let's see. Sorry, he was on connecting as a panelist, he says, but it is not letting him in.
If he can just end the Zoom meeting and join back again, or maybe use another device if possible.
I'm sorry, Kenner, for some reason, I'm having trouble hearing.
If he, he should log out of the Zoom meeting, exit out of Zoom, and try joining back again on a different device.
I'll tell him to do that. I'll go ahead and start with Peter, though, in the meantime, if that's all right?
We've got to make sure your applicant gets on. Unfortunately, we'd be okay the other way around, but I see Gerard. I, I'm going to promote Gerard the panelist right now.
Perfect.
Is someone called LJ Professional with you as well? They've, they're hand raised, so I'm going to promote them too. Great.
Okay, perfect. Gerard, can you just introduce yourself, state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name's Gerard Alia, owner of Chicago Barbell Compound, address is 6325 North Avondale Avenue, Suite 110, Chicago, Illinois 60631.
Great. And Gerard, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I'm sorry, I did not hear you. Say that again.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Perfect. And just so we know, LJ Professional, are you with the applicant?
I am. I'm his business owner, but business partner.
Okay, great, just confirming.
He's the other manager of the two entities.
Okay.
Would you like to also, we did not submit affidavits on his behalf. We don't need his testimony this evening for our case, so probably better if he just remains a spectator.
Yep, yep, I think so.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, Gerard. Mr. Chairman, I don't know how much you want us to go through the operations of, of the gyms. You guys have all of our information, but I'll simply ask Gerard to testify as to, you know, the consistency of his testimony with the materials we submitted, if that's all right, unless we can, you'd like us to go into the operations.
Yeah, no, I think even just with the focus on, you know, what's changed if a business license lapsed.
Absolutely, okay. Gerard, can you just explain to us simply what the chairman asked, what has changed with respect to the split of the two businesses? Can you explain kind of the difference between the two, the two businesses you and your partner run?
Sure. Chicago Barbell Compound is a 24/7 gym. It's your traditional gym, say like an export or an LA Fitness, where you come in, the member comes in and does their own thing. We have machines, treadmills, stuff you'll see in a typical gym. And then CrossFit Park Ridge, the one beside Chicago Barbell Compound, we call it CrossFit PR, is a class-based, class-based workout where we have coaches running a class, and the class may have anywhere from one member up to 10, 10 members in a class. Imagine a Zumba class, but not, but it's not Zumba. That would be your CrossFit Park Ridge. They've always existed side by side. They've always had the special use in the past, which unfortunately, we lost when the business license lapsed. Other than, other than that, the business has not changed in any way.
Excellent, thank you. And we provided some information to the board regarding other operation characteristics, the history of the businesses, your experience as well. And if your testimony were to continue this afternoon, would it be consistent with the materials and information we submitted to the board?
Yes, it would.
I, I'll go ahead and move on to Peter.
Okay, perfect. Peter's sworn in, and we've acknowledged his expertise.
Excellent. Thanks. Peter, you had an opportunity to review this site, visit the site, and assess whether the two requests for special use as to these two gyms met the standards for special use.
Yes, that's correct.
And in your professional opinion, would you agree that, I'll just take them separately, that the business and space as related to Chicago Barbell Compound meets the standards for special use in the city of Chicago?
Yes, it does.
And would you, in your professional opinion, would you also say that CrossFit PR LLC, the business and the space meet the standards for special use in the city of Chicago?
Yes, that's right, that's true.
Excellent. I don't have anything else for Peter, but I just will mention one thing I, I just noticed. I don't know how I didn't notice this before, but in the agenda as to 22-22-S, there is a typo in the applicant name. It says LLC, like dog instead of LLC. So if that can just be corrected, just to make sure the order is correct.
Yeah, well, we will amend that on the record. When I read it in the recommendation, I was wondering if there's a new type of limited liability entity.
Not that I know of.
Not aware of it as a corporate attorney, so LLC, we're going to amend it on the record.
Thank you. I don't have anything further for my witnesses, but we're all here and happy to answer questions if the board has any.
Great, thank you. Yeah, any questions from the board?
Just a quick, quick question for the owner. Why did the license lapse?
When the, the, there was a previous owner, and we purchased the gym from the previous owner. And I assumed that the license application renewals were going to him, and he never gave it to, to me, and it lapsed. And, and when it lapsed, I started to apply for that business license. And then it was telling me, someone in the office of ZBA told me that once that lapses, the special use automat, automatically lapses with that. And that was like, blew my, blew my brains almost right there.
I got you. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll take this under consideration.
Thank you all.
Enjoy your weekends.
Thank you.
We are now going to go to calendar numbers 36-22-S and 37-22-S. If anyone's here to object to these special uses, raise your hand, and we'll get you promoted. Meantime, I'm going to read the department's recommendation. For 36-22-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair and nail salon. For 37-22-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art/microblading service.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name's Eric Peck, and I'll be the attorney for the Is she on the line yet?
Yep, and Counselor, just to know, we're getting some, some Wi-Fi feedback. So maybe you turn your camera off?
Certainly. Certainly. Is that better?
So I'm still, still seeing your image. It's still pretty shaky. Let's try again.
Can I stop your video because the host is stopped? Okay.
Yeah, this is better. We hear you better.
Okay, very good. All right, with me is the expert, Mr. Trent in the office here. And is Ms. Corral been let in yet?
I'm here.
Okay, very good. If I can commence, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Eric Peck and I'm the attorney for Ms. Alma Corral of the Glamory Chicago, who's the applicant this evening. Corral is present today as well as Mr. Trent. He's with me in the office here as our expert witness. And before I begin with the direct examination of Ms. Corral and Mr. Trent, I just want to let the board know that Ms. Corral is here today seeking two special use variances to the property commonly known as forty-seven fifty-four North Milwaukee Avenue. The building currently contains two storefronts, one of which Ms. Corral wishes to locate her business. And there's a second storefront which contains a law office, which is also the owner of the building. The first special use is to establish a hair and nail salon that is located within a thousand feet of an existing personal service business located in the B-three Community Shopping District. And the second special use is to establish a body art microblading service located in a community shopping district. To date, the applicants receive no objections to the business or the requested special uses. And furthermore, Ms. Corral has received letters of support, of support from City of Chicago Alderman Jim Gardner, as well as letters of support from the Jefferson Park Chamber of Commerce. Both documents which were provided to the ZBA staff, I believe should be in your folders. With that, if you'd like me to proceed with the direct examination, you could swear in our witnesses and I'll start with Ms. Corral.
Yep, great. Ms. Corral, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Alma Corral, C-O-R-R-A-L, and my address is thirty-four zero eight North Page, Chicago, Illinois, six-zero-six-three-zero.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, okay, Counselor, go right ahead with the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Corral, just to begin with, you live in the neighborhood in which you're seeking to open the salon?
Yes, I do.
And in the time that you've posted notice of this hearing, have you received any objections? Or has anybody contacted you with regard to the business and the special uses?
No.
Thank you. If the special uses are approved, you plan on opening a hair salon, would you kindly just explain the services that you'd be offering?
We'll be doing hair, nails, lashes, and permanent makeup.
All right. And how many employees do you anticipate having?
Two at this time.
All right, and those are going to be you and?
That would be my daughter.
Okay, so it'll be a family-run business?
Yes.
And just with regard to parking, is there parking in front of the building?
Yes, there is parking in front of the building and.
There's two parking spaces located behind the building?
Yes.
All right. And do you and your daughter, when you open the business, plan on taking public transportation? Are you going to be parking your vehicles there?
I know, we'll be taking public transportation to get there.
All right, so there's two open spaces in the back. If the uses are approved, you'll agree to operate in accordance with all the State of Illinois licensing requirements, as well as the City of Chicago licensing requirements for hair and nail salons, as well as microblading requirements?
Yes.
And if approved, your hours of operation, as I understand it, would be Monday through Saturday, say six AM to six PM?
Yes.
Okay, closed on Sunday?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Corral, I, I think there's another hair salon in the area that's currently in operation. I haven't, I checked, I haven't seen it open. Have you seen it open?
No, no, I have not.
So we're not able to, you know, Mr. Chairman, we're not able to comment as to what the other hair salon offers. It hasn't been open and I don't know if it'll be open, but I just wanted to put that into the record. And Ms. Corral, when you or your, will you and your staff comply with all COVID requirements, which are in place or may be put into place in the State of Illinois or the city? Very good. And Ms. Corral, my office has filed a witness statement on your behalf. And if you were to continue testifying this afternoon, would your testimony be consistent with those statements submitted?
Yes.
Thank you. And I have nothing further from Ms. Corral unless the board has some questions.
And Ms. Corral, will you remind us, how many employees do you intend to hire?
Well, it's just two of us at this time. That would be myself and my daughter working there.
Okay, that, so that's the plan for right now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. Other questions from the board for Ms. Corral?
This is Commissioner Sanchez. Which, which one is going to be doing the, the body art microblading?
That would be my daughter. She is a licensed esthetician.
Okay. And how long has she been doing that?
She's been doing that for about two years now.
Thanks.
Very good. Then shall I proceed with Mr. Trent?
Yes, please.
Very good. Please, have you sworn in?
I don't believe I have.
If you would please swear, Mr. Trent?
Yeah, Mr. Trent, please state your name and address.
My name is Richard Trent. I live at eighty-seven Hunt Trail, Lake Barrington, Illinois, six-zero-zero-one-zero.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I swear and affirm to tell the truth.
Okay, since you haven't been in front of this, this board to, at least during my, my time here, can you give the board a little bit of a background on, on yourself and what makes you worthy of us acknowledging your expertise on this matter?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been a urban planner for now almost twenty-four, twenty-five years, five, almost five years here in Illinois. Probably about seventeen to eighteen years in the state of Michigan. I got my undergrad or bachelor's degree from the university, was going to say Michigan, shame on me, from Michigan State University, which is a Bachelor of Science for urban and regional planning. I've worked for several communities from varying sizes, from township to city to county. I've worked with a number of applicants. I've certainly worked with businesses as well. Where I come in handy in this particular case is I'm, I'm very familiar with this type of use in the community I currently work in and provide services to. This is not an uncommon type of use. And certainly the circumstances surrounding the site seem to fit and fit well with this location.
Great, okay, thank you. Yeah, and we acknowledge your expertise for this matter. So Counselor, with that, you can go forward with any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Trent, were you retained by the applicant, Ms. Corral, to evaluate the property and see if the proposed use at the subject property complies with all the standards and requirements for, for the special uses?
Yes, I was, Mr. Peck.
And did you have an opportunity to see and evaluate the subject property and surrounding areas?
Yes, I was, Mr. Peck.
And you put your findings and opinions in writing and produced a report for this ZBA, correct?
Correct, I did, Mr. Peck.
And in that report, which evaluated the property, it's your testimony and professional opinion that the property and uses are in compliance with all the standards and criteria for such special uses set forth in the current zoning code?
That is correct, Mr. Peck.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony opinion be consistent with that report?
Yes, it would, Mr. Peck.
All right. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that you and the board have copies of the report. And with that, I'll conclude our direct testimony. And if there's any questions that we can field, we'd be happy to.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Any additional questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Corral, thank you for, for hanging on to one of our last for today, and we will take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Have a great weekend.
Yep, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to circle back to what will be our last set of matters today. Fifty-six dash twenty-two dash S and fifty-seven dash twenty-two dash Z. We do have an objector on for these matters, Ken House. So if there are any other objectors, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Meantime, as the Counselor gets settled, I'm going to read the department's recommendation for the special use. Okay, so for fifty-six dash twenty-two dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a residential use below the second floor for proposed six-story, fifty-two building with two business live-work units and commercial space on the ground floor and twelve unenclosed parking spaces, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, prepared by Hirsch MPD Architecture Plus Planning. Okay, so as Andrew Scott gets set, Andrew, you have an objector on this matter. So we're going to go through typical process where we start with the applicant, applicant gives case in chief. Board asks questions as fit. We're then going to go to the objector. The objector can either state an objection or ask questions of you, or they can say they no longer object. We'll go back to you and for rebuttal testimony and we'll close it up. This whole time, the board can be asking questions. So with that, let me confirm that we've got Ken on.
Kenneth, who has to accept the promotion, Chairman, that?
Yeah. Yeah, Ken. Ken, are you able to accept the promotion? Let's see, Ken, if you, could you try to unmute? I think it's star six. Is that right, Kamal?
Uh, no, Chairman, he's on, on a computer, so he just has to click on his microphone. He might have stepped away, I have a feeling.
Yes, hello, this is.
Yeah, we've, we've got you, Ken. So did you hear my rundown of how the objector process goes?
If you just did it, then no. If you've done it all day, then yes, kind of.
I'll give a super abbreviated version just so, so you know. So we're going to start with the applicant's case in chief. Board will ask questions meantime. Then we'll go over to you. You can either, you can state an objection, ask questions of the applicant, withdraw your objection, really up to you. From there, we go back to the applicant for rebuttal and closing. And this whole time, the board can be asking questions. And Ken, we're trying to promote you to a panelist, so if you could accept that, that would be helpful. Good. Ken just accepted, so Counselor, you can go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, first of all, let me say and express my appreciation for your indulgence on moving us around on the agenda today. It's very much appreciated. For the record, my name is Andrew Scott with the Law Offices of Dyke Magusit, here on behalf of the applicant. And with me as well, I guess I would like to confirm Matt Wilber, principal with the applicant, and David Gents, project architect with Hirsch MPG. And then finally, Peter Kulos with the Metron Group. Are they all showing up?
Yep, we've got them all. Okay, great, thank you.
So just some very quick background on the property. This is a one-twenty-five by one-twenty-five lot at the northeast corner of Addison and Ravenswood. It's fifteen, it's about a fifteen and a half thousand square foot lot. It's located, located in very close proximity, probably about three hundred feet away from the Addison L-stop. It's currently improved with a single-story commercial building that was, is vacant at this time. It was formerly multi-tenant. And then there are also two, two multi-story residential buildings. To the east, you can see it in the blue, and then behind the building with the brown roof, that's the second multi-unit building immediately that makes up the, the rear of the subject property. The proposed project, it is a transit-oriented development. We went through the rezoning process in late twenty-twenty-one. An overall view of the project, it's fifty-two dwelling units, forty-six standard units, six efficiencies. That also includes two live-work units on the ground floor. There's approximately fifty-eight hundred square feet of retail fronting mainly on Addison. Twelve off-street parking spaces in the rear, and then we're also providing eight affordable units on, onsite. I should also mention, because I know particularly with, with Kisho Toya, community process is a very big part. This was a very, very robust community process. We had two presentations to the Lakeview Roscoe Village Chamber of Commerce, one on June twenty-fourth of last year and the other one on August twenty-sixth. We also had a virtual community meeting. Notices went out to property owners within seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of the subject property, and I think we had about sixty attendees. That was a virtual meeting. We had multiple dialogues with the Wake West Lakeview neighbors. We did not actually do a presentation to them, but there was a, there were several exchanges of plans, comments, planned revisions back and forth, and we got their input. Finally, we did do a presentation to the Alderman Zoning Advisory Committee on June tenth. And finally, we did actively engage with both of our neighbors, one of which is the objector here today, to the north and to the east. This community process, it, it, it basically, you know, because it was so robust and because there was so much dialogue and so much feedback, you know, this, this project that you're seeing today is the product of a lot of input that we got over about a four or five month period. We originally, when, you know, when the developer was sitting down with the architects and was conceiving, okay, you know, how can we maximize the TOD, implement the city's policy to try to have a lot more density in and around stations, just kind of trying to map the FAR, get as many units as you can, get, get the building as tall as you can. But really, as I mentioned, over five months of engagement with the community and the Alderman and neighbors to the east and to the north, that coupled with our client's willingness to make concessions during this period, it, it brought us to the project today. And if, if you can indulge me, I'd like to talk through, you know, the concessions that, that were made in, in response to, to all the comments that we got. I mean, first of all, the building is, it's smaller than originally proposed, lopping off about two thousand square feet. The height was reduced to seventy feet, and that's just, that's the gross height of the building. It actually reads more like a sixty-foot building because the last story is set back towards the center of the proposed building. The unit count was reduced to fifty-two, including two live-work units. The parking count was increased from nine parking spaces to twelve. There were a lot of comments that we got from the neighborhood about, even though, you know, most of this property was impervious to start with. There was concerns about drainage and stormwater runoff and things of that nature. And so what my client committed to do was adding permeable pavers in the rear to help with stormwater, about thirty-four hundred square feet. They also had enhanced green space along the perimeter of the property, adding for more permeable surface. And then finally, an enlarged green area on the roof, again, to address the neighbors' concerns about stormwater, how it would be absorbed. We also got input on the architectural portion. It was, those were incorporated into the facade design. We ended up recessing the residential windows to provide more articulation and to allow for to read better. And as I mentioned before, adding a green roof that was about forty-one hundred square feet. As I had mentioned before, there was specific engagement between Matt Wilber, who's on today, and Mr. Roos. I, I think they spoke one or two times and exchanged emails. And in response to his specific request, we actually pulled the building back from the alley. There was concern about the site triangles there and about the possibility for accidents. And I think an important point to bring up that folks may not be familiar with, this alley to the north of our property, the one that separates the subject property from the objector's property, it's a, it is a heavily used alley because there is a school to the east, I believe it's St. Andrews. And so it's used for a drop-off in the mornings and there's just a lot of traffic there. Mr. Roos raised the concern about, you know, the site triangles, and so we did pull our building back specifically in response to his request. He also articulated concerns about our location of our dumpsters. And so what we did is we moved all of those to the. And so what we did is we moved all of those to the interior of the building. We also, Mr. Roos was concerned about the intersection of the T alley immediately to the west. And so in response to his specific request, we relocated the entry to our parking area so that it aligned with that team, with that north-south alley. A couple of other items that we committed to as well, even though they weren't located on our property, really to address concerns that were raised by Mr. Roos, was we agreed to put speed humps in the alley. Now, we don't control the alley, but we committed to the fact that we would work with him, we would work with C dot to install speed humps. Obviously, it's not up to us, but again, we made that commitment to address his specific concern. We also committed to installing protective barriers on the north side of the alley. He was concerned that somehow our traffic, there's a lot of traffic there today, but somehow our traffic was going to adversely affect his building that abuts the alley. So we said, okay, fine, if we can get C dot to agree, we will, we will put protective barriers on the north side of the alley. Finally, we committed to supporting residential permit parking. Again, though, you know, he raised concerns in his email to the board about the lack of parking here. We did increase it in response to his comments and the community. But we said we will fully support and will advocate to the Alderman's Office, putting in, you know, permit parking in and around the neighborhood. I can tell you that one of the other principals with the applicant did do a drive-through on the neighborhood at different hours of the night. And it actually appears that there is available parking, but nonetheless, we said we were willing to, you know, undertake all of that in consideration of the concerns that he raised. The other thing that I think is important here is just in terms of the agreements and how we worked with the Alderman's Office. He specifically said, and this is Alderman Martin, said that he wanted to see larger affordable units. Now, we have a mix where probably, I think it's thirty-six, if I've got the number correct, I'm sorry, thirty-two of our units are one-bedrooms, sixteen are two-bedrooms and then four, you know, four studios. So, you know, unlike perhaps some developers that may try to just get in as many studios and one-bedrooms as possible, you know, we did, there's a mix of, of the one-bedrooms, the two-bedrooms. And the reason I'm mentioning this is because we actually committed to do seven two-bedroom affordable units on the site, which is, if you are familiar with the ARO, generally, your unit mix is supposed to be reflective, I'm sorry, your ARO units are supposed to be reflective of the unit mix in the building. But again, in response to the Alderman's desires to have larger affordable units, we were willing to make that commitment as part of this overall development. I'm mentioning all of these because it is going to flow into, you know, what are the particular difficulties or hardships that we're dealing with? And we can talk about that in just a minute. But I guess I would wrap up sort of the community process with, we did get a letter of support from Alderman Martin. It should be in your file. And we did get a letter of support from the Chamber of Commerce as well. So again, there was widespread community support, widespread community engagement here. Before I move on to, so we have a special use up and we also have a variation up. And I guess, Mr. Chairman, to try to make best use of everybody's time, I think we may be able to dispatch with the special use unless Mr. Roos is objecting to our live-work units. If, if he's not, then I would just put on our special use case in the normal abbreviated version that I would call my witnesses. But if he has specific objections to this, to the proposed live-work units, then I can put on my entire case for both applications. So I guess if.
Yeah, I think, I think if you just put on like normal and with the knowledge that it will come back to you. So, because we'll want to hear about your special use. So if you, if you just do some sort of streamline for both, then the conversation will come back after Ken has the time to speak.
Okay. So just, let me start with the variation and, you know, the practical difficulties that, that we're dealing with. And as I had mentioned before, you know, it really isn't one factor that is, you know, creating the practical difficulty here. There's actually a number. It is the result of the entire community process and all of the concessions that the applicant was willing to make in order to reduce square footage of the building, particularly on the fifth floor, to pull it away from our neighbor to the east, pull it away from the neighbor to the, to the north. In addition to that, we're working with, this is a very strong, vibrant commercial corridor. It's a, it's actually a three-cent, three-street intersection between Lincoln, Ashland and Ravenswood. A lot of commercial uses up and down, very, very strong commercial area. So in keeping with the city's policy, there was a desire, you know, to maintain and be consistent with that policy and to hold the street wall. And so that's what we've done on Ravenswood. And we also did that as you turn the corner onto Addison. And then finally, there was also, you know, the desire of, you know, providing a more livable environment. If you just do a simple rectangular building, square building, and David, our architect, is going to talk to this a little bit more in the future. But if you just do a rectangular building, there's a lot of borrowed light, there isn't a lot of direct natural light. And so by doing the L-shaped building that we're proposing here, you get more natural light into more of the units, which as I had mentioned, it creates a more livable environment. So that's kind of in combination, the difficulties or the challenges that we had as we were pulling together this site. So if I could just turn to, let's see. If I could call David Gents first, as my first witness, if, did you swear him in?
No, we haven't sworn anyone in. So David, will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is David Gents. I'm a Principal at Hirsch MPG. Our address is two-twenty-five West Hubbard, fifth floor, Chicago.
Thank you. And you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. So David, as I had mentioned, this property it fronts on two streets, each of which have very, very strong commercial presences. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And in terms of the challenges that you faced with regard to the rear yard setbacks, it was a difficulty and a challenge to be able to implement one of the city's longstanding policies to hold the street front. Is that also correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And also, can you just elaborate a little bit on my comment about how this, you know, the L-shaped building as opposed to a rectangle creates a more livable, more enjoyable, you know, dwelling unit than if you were to just do a simple square box?
Sure, yeah. So the L-shaped building compared to a rectangular building with a continuous thirty-foot rear yard setback has forty feet more perimeter on the exterior wall per floor. And that extra forty feet allows us to provide all the, you know, bedrooms and living spaces with windows. When, if we were to have done the rectilinear building with a continuous thirty-foot rear yard setback, what we would end up doing is putting some of the bedrooms in the back of the unit because it's a much deeper, more square building. And so when we're planning a building, especially at corners, what we look to do is to try and find more perimeter to make these units more livable. It actually makes the building more expensive. It's, it's a, it's a considerably cheaper building to build less perimeter per square foot of occupied space. But the owner's committed to doing, you know, has a long view and is committed to doing very livable units. So this was the planning strategy that was, was done. And one other note on the rear yard setback is while we are fully encroaching the rear yard setback for a portion of the building, for the other half of the building to the east, we are almost doubling the rear yard setback. So instead of just doing thirty feet, we are at fifty-five feet back of our building base. So it's a, it's a trade-off. And we find at planning buildings of this scale or corners on commercial corridors that wrapping the building around the corner to find that extra perimeter and to essentially put the same open space you would have in the back in a slightly different position for the betterment of, for the betterment of everybody. So that's the basic.
Thank you.
It's approach.
Okay, and just in terms of how the proposed variation meets the stated purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance, is it your opinion that this proposed variation, it provides an economically vibrant and attractive business and commercial corridor? Because it does hold the corner, is that, is that your opinion?
Yes.
And also, it protects the character of the established residential areas by moving bulk and density to the periphery of these neighborhoods rather than locating them sort of in the center core of a neighborhood. Is that also correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And it also allows for additional dwelling units, which ensures that additional residents are going to support local businesses. Is that also correct?
Yes, it does.
And the request of relief that also provides for different types of housing choices, you know, for the community, is that also correct?
Yes.
And then finally, it, the variations, they accommodate future growth in the neighborhood that would otherwise comply with all the other provisions of the zoning ordinance. Is that also correct?
Yes.
And then again, as to the unique circumstances that are, they're faced here and, you know, why it wouldn't be applicable. Again, there was a lot of community input, which I'm going to say shaped, pardon the repetition, shaped the shape of this building. Is that also correct?
Yes.
And it's also a matter of, you kind of have a set of unique circumstances here where you do have a six-way intersection, all of which are, you know, have strong commercial presences on them. Is that also correct?
Yes, it is.
And you also probably, you know, in other commercial areas, you wouldn't encounter these types of, that you're encountering at this particular location, is that right?
This site does present the unique circumstances, yes.
That's correct, yes. And then in just in terms of the character of the neighborhood, is it, is it also up and down Lincoln? Particularly in proximity to the L stations. There are larger buildings that are centered in or around those L stations, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And then you also have less resident, less dense residential buildings, so that kind of the interior of the major streets that surround the area, is that also correct?
Yes, it is.
And it's also correct that many of the buildings already in the area are, you know, extend to their lot lines in varying degrees. Is that also correct?
Yes.
And so again, just the, the building that we're proposing here, you know, greater density along the, the more heavily-trafficked areas on the perimeter of, on the perimeter of sort of the interior areas for residential, that's all in character with the area north center, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then just in terms of, you know, why you wouldn't see this in other zoning classifications, again, you've got this six-corner intersection that you're dealing with where, again, you want to hold the corner. And so these particular conditions, you're not going to find in similarly-zoned property in other areas of the city, is that correct?
Correct.
And again, you're at a, you're at a strong corner. And so you want to hold that corner to activate the street and promote a vibrant kind of pedestrian environment. Is that also correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then just in terms of, you know, impacts on the public welfare, this was, you designed the building in accordance with all codes, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's not going to have an adverse impact on other properties or improvements in the area, particularly given all of the changes that have made, been made to the building through the course of the community process. Is that also correct?
Yes.
And then just in terms of, do you, do you meet all the standards for light and air that are required by the building code?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And is it, from your perspective, is this going to increase congestion in the public street, particularly given the proximity to the Addison Brown Line Station immediately to the west of the subject property and also the Ashland Bus Line that is less than half a mile to the east of the subject property?
Is it going to increase congestion?
Because we have so many transit options in the area and, you know, we're providing possibly more than adequate parking. It's not going to increase congestion, is that correct?
It's not going to increase congestion.
Thank you. And then also, you designed the building in accordance with all fire codes and electrical codes, so there's not going to be any hazards to public safety, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And in fact, it's, it's more likely than not that it'll have a positive impact on property values because there will be new, you know, new development in the area, which will have a positive impact on other commercial and retail businesses in the area, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if, I, I don't know if there are, if you want to ask questions of David or if you'd like me to go on to, to Matt Wilber?
Yeah, well, let's ask. So any questions from the board for David? Okay, let's keep going on, let's go to Matt Wilber. Matt, so if you can state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name's Matt Wilber. I'm a Principal in the project. I live at twelve-twenty-one West Eddie in Chicago, six oh six five seven.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
So Matt, very quickly, just let's turn to the, you know, your returns on, on this project. Again, it's your opinion that without the relief that we're seeking here today, you can't, you, the project couldn't yield a reasonable return without the relief that we're seeking, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We, we originally had planned a, a six-story building for the project and early on decided to remove this, the living space at the sixth floor. And in order to try to maintain rentable square footage and unit counts, ended up going with a five-story building, but a building that was wider. The, the larger ARO units also have a significant effect on the, the return on this project, which we've been trying to compensate for.
You did do an analysis of your yields. And if you weren't to get the variation that you're seeking today, I think you had said that your returns on investment would be about seven-point-seven percent, is that correct?
That's correct. That's about roughly half of typical plan for a project like this.
And because, as you said, it's about fifty percent of what the debt and equity markets are looking for, it would be very unlikely to be able to finance this project or attract the equity that would be needed to undertake it. Is that also correct?
It wouldn't be viable, that's correct.
And then just in terms of the variation, you alluded to this a minute ago. But what we're seeking here in the variation, it's not solely out of a desire to make more money from the project. You're in fact trying to meet and adhere to the, the character of the neighborhood, the commercial corridor that this property sits on. And you're also trying to adhere to city policy standards in terms of holding the corners, bringing B and C properties to the property line, is that correct?
That's correct. This is a prominent corner and a very active intersection, six-way intersection. And we feel that this design really addresses both Addison and Ravenswood and, you know, promotes, activates pedestrian uses on, on both streets.
And just in terms of the hardships that we've, we've been through, these were not brought about by yourself. These were actually, again, it was part of the give and take. And in some cases, the requirements of the community, in some cases, the requirements of the Alderman. Is that also correct? And so you did not have the specific role in creating these hardships, right?
No.
And then just in terms of what David had alluded to before, you know, the, the challenge or the practical difficulty of creating a more livable building, that's just the, the natural evolution of buildings. And you didn't have a role in that either, is that also correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to go to any questions for Mr. Wilber before we turn to the special use?
Yeah, any questions for Mr. Wilber at this point in time from the board? Okay, yep, let's keep going.
Okay, so I'm just going to, I'm going to pivot to the two proposed live-work units, which are located on the Addison frontage, I'm sorry, the Ravenswood frontage on the ground floor. And Matt, you're still with me, right?
Yes.
Okay. In terms of why these live-work units are in the public interest, you know, we've talked about that this is an active and vibrant commercial corridor, retail corridor, but there also is a, there's a fair amount of vacancies sort of between Belmont and I'm going to say all the way up to Irving Park, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the idea of adding a whole lot more commercial space would actually perhaps add to what is commercial space, uh, would actually perhaps add to what is currently a saturated market. Is that al- is that also correct?
That's correct. Actually, our original design contemplated more retail space, uh, and the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce advised us to reduce that space, um, which we, we followed the direction. The live-work spaces, uh, allow us to maintain some sort of connection at grade, um, to that, you know, original retail space.
And it also, it, it provides kind of a, you know, unique product in the area, just in terms of having a kind of a smaller work area. It might be a professional, it might be an artist, uh, it might be some kind of small medical office and also gives somebody the opportunity to have, you know, to be able to live in close proximity. And that's kind of unique in the area. Is that also correct?
Yep.
And it also provides, you know, business efficiencies for maybe small businesses that are just starting out. Is that also correct?
That's true.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could just go to David Gents, uh, to talk about a couple of the other items?
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, go right ahead. So in regards to the special use, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, great. Yeah, let's get anything out of David before, um, and then let's switch to the objector.
Okay, uh, Dave, but just in, in terms of your knowledge of the area, uh, the proposed live-work units, they've been designed such that they're in a, they're compatible, uh, with the character and scale of other uses in the area. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And as we had talked about before, the intersection of Lincoln, Ravenswood and Addison, it's, it's predominantly ground floor commercial, uh, with retail uses of varying sizes. Is that also correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so again, having a small, you know, two small, uh, work areas i- is completely compatible, uh, with, uh, with the ground floor nature of the surrounding area, right?
Yes.
And then just in terms of, uh, let's stay on character for a second. It's anticipated that any users of the, of the space, you know, their hours are, are going to be consistent with, or maybe even less than other, other users in the area?
Correct.
And then just in terms of noise, odors, anything that would have a deleterious impact on the surrounding area, that would also, uh, again, uh, it, they're not going to be anything of that nature. So again, uh, very consistent with other uses in the area. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you've also designed the live-work units such that it will maintain, uh, free and clear pedestrian flow uh, in front of the property?
Yes, that's correct.
And no adverse impacts on the abutting sidewalk. Is that also correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've also done it with easy access, so that there isn't, uh, any kind of risk of kind of, uh, pedestrian vehicular, uh, uh, you know, conflict, um, in these live-work units?
Yes, that's correct.
And then otherwise, you've designed the live-work units such they comply with all of the provisions of the Chicago zoning ordinance. Is that also correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I could call Peter Kulos? If you want to swear him, then I guess he's already sworn in?
Peter's been sworn in, and we've acknowledged his expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Peter, you've, uh, you've, you're familiar with the property. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you're a certified appraiser. Is that also correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And you prepared a special use analysis regarding the property. Is that, is that also correct?
Yes, that's right.
And as part of your analysis, uh, you were rendered an opinion as to whether or not the proposed live-work units would have any adverse impact on surrounding property values. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And could you tell the board, uh, your conclusions in that analysis?
Sure, I've, we concluded that, um, that, that the live-work units would have no, um, adverse impact on the surrounding property values. Um, as a matter of fact, this is a, a, a ongoing trend that has come into the market, um, in, in recent years, um, based on just the, uh, lack of demand for, for general retail. So it's happened a lot in new construction. It's also, I'm going, you know, it's also with characters of the neighborhood and everything, but, uh, it's been, um, it's been, the market has been moving towards these work, live-work maybe, units simply because of the low, low demand for, for pure retail.
Great. And so, you know, a- as you're indicating, uh, y- y- your findings are that this proposed use is wholly compatible with surrounding uses, uh, in the area? And also consistent with, and also consistent with the character of the Lincoln, uh, the Lincoln, not Ashland, Lincoln, Addison and, um, Ravenswood corridor. Is that also correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further of any of our witnesses. Again, we're available to answer any questions. Um, that may come up.
Yep. Um, so do we have any questions from the board before we move over, um, to Mr. Hous?
No, I just very glad that you went very deep with the business groups and the neighborhood groups and the alderman office. I like how you laid it all out and you even reached out to West Lake U neighbor. So very well, well done. Communication is a key to success. It seems like you communicated with as many people as you could on this project. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, any, any other, any questions from the board or else, um, let's go to, uh, Mr. Hous? Okay, Mr. Hous, um, if you're still on, can you please state your name and address?
Uh, yes, Kenneth Hous, thirty-six fifteen and thirty-six nineteen North Ravenswood Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one three.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Okay, again, thanks for, thanks for staying on, especially when earlier in the day, um, this didn't come up when it was supposed to. So we really appreciate the dedication with that. Um, go ahead and make an objection, and also you can ask any questions of the applicant that you want as well.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I have a handful of topics to kind of cover. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the applicant as far as their, you know, timely, uh, commitment to talking to the various community outreaches that have been acknowledged from, uh, the community, the alderman and the various organizations that's, are surrounding this community. It is, um, a- and also with myself directly. Um, so I fully acknowledge that my purpose for coming on here is, uh, not to the, um, whole design per se, it's a specific portions of the design. While I've had, uh, mixed, um, feelings and so forth and discussions regarding just the proposed, um, applicant here, uh, or proposed project, I should say. Um, you know, they have acknowledged a lot and made a lot of concessions, including the ones specific that aren't necessarily to the building, such as speed bumps in the alley and post, uh, along the back property line there, which, uh, to Mr. Scott's, uh, um, comment on that, you know, the concern is from cars turning radius coming in and out of the parking area to where it could, you know, have butt up against my property, which is the thirty-six fifteen and, uh, directly adjacent to the alley that runs, uh, along that north lot. And so that turning radius having any type of, um, bumps to protect what is my fence there going into my backyard where my kids play, is my concern to have those safety posts in place in that back thing. So again, I appreciate the applicant's acknowledgement and willingness to do that. Um, but just wanted to clarify the, the purpose there was one thing. Um, my, uh, while I also acknowledge the applicants, uh, so, in support of zoning the parking, uh, along Ravenswood and maybe any adjacence, I just want to, for the record, state that some of the primary, while they've done, uh, a traffic study in the area as they mentioned, you know, um, it's, it hasn't been too bad lately, but that's been since COVID, uh, pre-COVID. It was a total nightmare, uh, as is, and adding fifty-four units, it's, my understanding is not fifty-two or fifty-four, uh, which equates to about approximately, I don't know, close to seventy beds with twelve parking spots. They did increase it from nine. Um, and sixty bike units, which on days like today, you know, you're not going to be riding your bike really, um, being very close to a TOD. Uh, that's been addressed and their support to have it zoned, in my opinion, needs to, you know, ha- absolutely needs to happen. I understand it's not the zoning board's, uh, juris, you know, decision there, but it, it really does need to be in parallel to the development of this. Um, you know, there currently, there's eight parking spots in the commercial space. There's four along the west, uh, street side of this, which is going to potentially become maybe a loading zone, which is needed because there's no loading zone back by the parking for residents that are moving in and out, um, any, you know, anything like that. So having that front area, um, to the residential entrance on the west side is important to tran- transform that to, in my opinion, at least, is it loading zone, which they plan to do, which is great. But they're also, you know, having removed the retail, existing retail parking. So the point is, from my perspective, uh, the street zoning needs to, to occur. The other reasons beyond that, though, are there are, uh, other commercial auto repair, several auto repair, um, businesses around the area that park their repair cars along the thirty-six hundred block of Raven, Ravenswood. Often and frequently, as they're working on and off their car, they leave them overnight, they even burn the day. Um, and then the adjacent St. Andrew's School, it is a very busy throughway, which they've acknowledged with the speed bumps should help, um, with that. But there are staff from St. Andrews that park there and so forth. So the two properties, just to also, that, that I own directly adjacent to the alleyway in the property here, if I've been the primary resident at thirty-six nineteen for seven years now, the, uh, thirty-six fifteen, uh, directly get adjacent to the alleyway is an income property of mine. And, uh, my lease, for instance, uh, on my tenants is coming up in June fifteenth, potentially during the, you know, construction phase of this. I have great concern about being able to rent the property while there's a massive construction going on. Um, so, um, you know, that, it is what it is. But I moved to this area because I used to live more downtown where those mid-rise, high-rise buildings, so that I was in more of a walk-up residential area. And, um, overall, just, uh, on stating this, um, you know, what is existing there is an eyesore. And so I, I do very much welcome, um, since new construction, I very much actually enjoy the, uh, developers, and I encourage that the project, is essentially at some point approved. My biggest concern, though, which wasn't, um, on the renderings during the community meeting, are the ba- the balconies, that, um, all face north and, uh, east essentially directly towards my back area, my backyard, uh, my roof deck property, uh, where we spend, you know, any of the nice days outside or anything. So now I'm all of a sudden going to have twenty-plus balconies of people facing directly in my yard where I have none of that right now. So despite the fact that the building is still, you know, much larger than what's there currently and what I was expecting when I bought the property, it's going to block my, any sunlight. So while their tenants and their apartments, uh, you know, drawing that nice sunlight, that is blocking my sunlight. I, I'm actually fine with that because of the new construction. I just, the, the privacy, though, of having twenty balconies facing directly into my backyard where my kids are playing, um, is a big concern of mine. And I'm also, I, you know, the alderman wants the twenty percent for low-income family hu- housing. Also, you know, relatively fine with that. But again, having twenty-plus balconies, new and strange people and so forth, staring into my, my yard and my so forth, where my kids are playing, is a big concern of mine. So I think the balcony is my main purpose, uh, for hopping on this. While I would ultimately like to see even the proposed size of the building and the proposed building approved, the balconies, uh, if we can get the parking, which isn't your jurisdiction, so to speak, the, um, the street zoned and for parking and then something with the balconies. I mean, if the argument is that, uh, the, the, you know, balconies add attraction to renting, uh, apartments and so forth, properties, obviously, I, I get that. But why not, why wasn't the design for balconies to be facing west and south on the street side? There's, um, you know, I've, so I had reached out to the alderman, uh, several times on this matter and hadn't gotten a response. Um, so I wanted to join here and just voice my concern, but to the, to essentially the committee here, um, if we can make, I don't know, I'd like to see something related to the bal- uh, balconies. But overall, I do actually encourage the approval of this, uh, development if we can make some concessions as, as noted. So.
Okay, um, and we will hear from the applicant about balconies. I'll, I'll circle back from that and, and kind of thanks for coming um, and participating in what sounds like some good communication that I hope will continue, um, between, between the applicant and you. Um, so with that, let's go back to the applicant and counselor. Um, if you could do a quick rebuttal that involves the balcony issue especially, um, and then we can close it out.
Sure. Uh, and let me, I, I would like to speak, uh, to one of Mr. Hous's, um, comments about, you know, his concern about re-tenanting the property. Um, you know, I, I guess I, I failed to mention that another one of Matt Wilber. Matt Wilber is the general contractor and also the principal here in this project. Uh, there was a commitment to the alderman's office and also Mr. Hous that during construction, prior to construction, there would be, you know, a similar amount of communication, uh, so that everybody in the area knew what was happening. And, uh, again, to try to, no- nobody likes construction. But again, that was another commitment that Matt made, uh, to this neighbor, uh, to, you know, ideally ensure for a, a smooth process. I think, I, I'm not sure who's better to address the question of the, the balconies, but I, I know that they were, I mean, I'll start out saying, Mr. Chairman, that they are per- they are permitted. Uh, there, no relief is, is, um, you know, being sought, uh, because of those, uh, because of the balconies. But they really came about because of a reconfiguration of the building efforts to be sensitive to our property owner to the west, uh, whom I also mentioned, I'm sorry, the east, whom we also engaged with. It was a loss of open space on the upper levels. And so we wanted to try to recapture some of that, you know, open space, outdoor space, uh, for a certain number of, of tenants in the building. I mean, i- it's as simple as that. Uh, you know, this is, this is Chicago, this is a city, this is, you know, a, a, you know, a somewhat dense area, part of North Center. And so to have a little bit of private outdoor space, uh, is, you know, certainly desirable. And truthfully, I think that, uh, you know, people that are sitting on decks, um, you know, I, I think they, they, you know, they have as much interest in their privacy as, you know, surrounding neighbors. Uh, but the fact of the matter is, you know, neighbors all up and down Ravenswood, uh, in both directions over on the Hermitage frontage. Uh, they've got decks as well that kind of look out over the expanse. So, you know, we see it as, you know, again, part of the evolution of this building. And at the same time, uh, it, it's just trying to provide a nicer environment for tenants of the building.
Yeah, I can make, this is Matt Wilber speaking. Um, I can make a couple of quick comments too, um, and, and I appreciate Ken joining. He's, he's, uh, been involved in a lot of this, probably more time-consuming than, uh, uh, he had ever imagined when we started into this. And I also appreciate everybody else's, uh, time on the phone here. I don't know how late your meetings usually go, but, uh, uh, appreciate everybody holding out for us here. Um, there are, uh, thirteen balconies on the back of building. They're not twenty. Um, it's probably six and one, half a dozen of them from Ken's standpoint, but there are thirteen balconies. Technically, only three of them face north towards, uh, Ken's property. The other, um, ten face east. Um, those balconies would still be able to look north. Um, but, uh, there's fewer balconies than, um, um, than what may have been indicated. Uh, we are trying to create outdoor space for, uh, some of these tenants. Um, putting the balconies on the, uh, Addison facade or on the Ravenswood facade would in be problematic for a couple of reasons. Number one, we'd be talking to you about public ways approvals to put these balconies over the public way. Um, but, uh, the other issue is facing Addison and, and facing, um, um, you know, west, we're facing the Metro Train. We just really didn't think that, uh, balconies on those facades would be, uh, marketable, uh, just because of noise, traffic, so on and so forth. I mean, I guess the only thing, uh, I can offer to Ken, and you know, again, we've, we've, we've gone back and forth with Ken and agreed to a lot of things to, uh, uh, to try to be a considerate neighbor. But there, there's really only three balconies that are at the north end of the property, so to speak. And, you know, something we could consider on those three balconies is putting some sort of screening on the, um, on the north edge of those three balconies, which would actually, um, create privacy probably really for both, um, parties. Um, and I think that screening would also provide some level of screening for the other seven balconies that are just to the south of those three balconies. So that's something we could certainly consider. I, you know, David, our architect, would have to figure out how that would work, but it seems like it's, uh, it's something that we could do to, uh, um, to help with the situation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and you know, counsel-
Chairman?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Am I, am I allowed to rebuttal on any of them or?
You know, I'll let you one quick comment, but then we're going to close this out.
Sure. Okay. Um, I just want to, the, the rent for the uh, income property, I was unaware of any acknowledgement to that topic. Um, so we can talk there. And as far as the balconies.
So, so I'm gonna.
Time, I'll just.
Yeah, so that's not really an objection, because this isn't a town call, town hall. We've got to stick to, they really don't have to rebut to anything, to be honest. Um, but also if it's not an objection, we've just got to move on.
Gotcha. Um, no, it's not an objection. It's an acknowledgement sent to Matt's last part. If, if we can discuss that balcony situation, work that out between us. Again, I, for time-sensitive situations and be able to make a ruling so they can, you know, move forward and not lose on time. And ultimately, I, I'm in favor of the, the development. So I'll leave it at that. So.
Okay. And Counselor, we've got a bunch of information here. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer you your closing, but then, you know, we can, we can take this under consideration.
Mr. Chairman, it's, I, I think it's been a long day for everybody and we appreciate your indulgence. I think we've gotten all the uh, information on the record necessarily that show that we meet the standards for a special use and a variation. So I won't belabor the points anymore. We will continue to work with our neighbors throughout the construction process. You have that commitment from us and I'll close with that.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone. Um, and we will take this under consideration. So I appreciate your time and sticking on.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So.
Have a good weekend. Thank you.
You too. So with that, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. For those viewing by live stream, we will return from our closed session and the live stream will continue at that point. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Salt?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great. I vote yes. We are closed.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, we have returned and we will now vote. Note that any motions to approve a special you tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. I move to approve all continuance requests to the date stated by me. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, they are approved. Okay, I move to approve application for calendar number thirty eight dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number thirty nine dash twenty two dash. Second, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number forty dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number forty one dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number forty two dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number forty three dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number forty four dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
This was Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar numbers forty seven dash twenty two dash Z and forty eight dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number fifty dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number fifty one dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number fifty two dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number fifty three dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number fifty four dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number fifty five dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar numbers fifty six dash twenty two dash S and fifty seven dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers fifty eight dash twenty two dash Z and fifty nine dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number sixty dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers sixty one dash twenty two dash Z and sixty two dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Recused.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar number sixty three dash twenty two dash S and sixty four dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Recused.
Great. Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve application for calendar numbers sixty five dash twenty two dash S and sixty six dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers sixty eight dash twenty two dash Z and sixty nine dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number seventy dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number seventy one dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number seventy two dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers seventy three dash twenty two dash Z and seventy four dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioners Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. Okay, so we're gonna go to the string, the Longdale Educational and Regional Network. So I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers seventy seven dash twenty two dash Z. Five oh four dash twenty one dash Z. Five oh five dash twenty one dash Z. Five oh six dash twenty one dash Z. Five oh seven dash twenty one dash Z. Five oh eight dash twenty one dash S. Five oh nine dash twenty one dash S. Five ten dash twenty one dash Z. And five eleven dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, all those matters are approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number seventy eight dash twenty two dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve application for calendar number seventy nine dash twenty two dash S. As amended on the record by the Assistant Voting Administrator Steve Valenziano. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved as a member. I moved to approve application for calendar number four eighteen dash twenty one dash. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers four thirty seven dash twenty one dash S. Four thirty eight dash twenty one dash Z. And five twenty dash twenty one dash C. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers five oh two dash twenty one dash S and five oh three dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
No.
Commissioner McDonald.
No.
Commissioner Toya.
Absent.
I vote no, the matters are denied. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers twenty two dash twenty two dash S and twenty three dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I moved to approve applications for calendar numbers thirty six dash twenty two dash S and thirty seven dash twenty two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioners Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, those matters are approved. Okay, I moved to approve the written resolution containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for board calendar numbers five seventeen dash twenty one dash S. Five eighteen dash twenty one dash Z and four thirty two dash twenty one dash C. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, they are approved. I moved to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for the board's January twenty first, twenty second. January twenty first, twenty twenty two regular meeting with the exception of board calendar numbers four hundred dash twenty one dash S. Four hundred and one dash twenty one dash Z. Thirty one dash twenty two dash S and three sixty seven dash twenty two dash twenty, let me reread the last one, sorry. And three sixty seven dash twenty one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, they are approved. I move that we adjourn this meeting. Commissioner Toya second, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time and all staff, because this meeting goes on all month for them. So thank you so much, everyone, and enjoy the weekend.
Thank you. Back at you.